Recording in progress.
To approve the agenda, please. All those in favor? Now we come to items from the floor. Members of the public are invited to speak. We ask you to keep it to three minutes. State your name if you're willing and where you live. We'd love to hear. And now's the time we are open for items from the floor if anybody has anything. All right, seeing none in the room and none online. We will close out items from the floor and we will get right into the agenda items for tonight. Starting with the agenda item number one, Trinidad Rancheria, 2023-04, a lot line adjustment.
Thank you. So this is related to the interpretive center that came before the planning commission. August 2021, and the Rancheria posed the need for a center or incorporate the bait shop and some offices. And the planning commission approved it. A portion of the building is to be located on the corner of the Lindo Street right of way. And the building couldn't be moved or adjusted because of other existing improvements that were launched that would be in the way of that. So the planning commission approved it with the condition that the Rancheria will enter into agreement with the city or create an easement to the satisfaction of the city attorney. Lindo Street right of way for the project. The city attorney, so for like the stormwater project, there's a landowner agreement in place for the Rancheria's work and the treatments in the city right of way. But because this is a new building, the city attorney was worried about liability issues and so he preferred. And transfer so that the. Interpretive Center would not be on city property. So city staff and Rancheria staff met in the harbor and discussed the issue. I believe there was a government meeting as well, the city council, tribal council. And so a tentative agreement was reached to exchange about 1,200 square feet of the southwest corner of the Lindo Street right of way. And to accommodate the interpretive center and then the city would obtain. An equal amount of land that would incorporate a portion of the Trinidad Head Trail that runs from the parking lot up to the access road. And the stairs at the top of that are on Rancheria property. So it's a lot line adjustment, but it's basically an exchange between the city and Rancheria. Just a note on the map normally with a lot line adjustment, you know, I've got parcel numbers and I've got areas and we've got a little bit more information. But the parcel, so the the bound, the outer boundaries of the Rancheria's properties, including the city property, that's pretty well established. That's considered. But the internal boundaries of the Rancheria properties are. That parcel map is what I normally look at and I assume is least reasonably correct and it's really not. So I can't really say like it still shows Bay Street and the city abandoned Bay Street. Well, I think it was. But how the how Bay Street was dispersed, it's usually down the center line, but then there's that alley. So how. How Bay Street was dispersed to the various properties, exactly which parcels obtained that. I'm I'm a little unsure, so I couldn't be exact with that information on my staff report. But I think we're still pretty comfortable with the, you know, in concept, this this land exchange. A survey will be completed once the lot line adjustment is approved to determine exactly. Where those boundaries are in terms of the trail and the interpretive center and so the exact amount of land and the exact boundaries and what parcels they're going to. Will be determined as part of the survey and the city engineer will have to review and approve that. And then in addition, a lot line adjustment requires a coastal development permit. Just as a reminder, the city is not authorized to issue coastal development permits in the harbor area, at least in the portion of the commercial. And so that will have to go to the coastal commission. So the Rancheria is. Working on getting their application together to submit to the coastal commission for the interpretive center and it will include the lot line adjustment. Let's see the approval before that. I think. Normally with a lot line adjustment, we have to look at setbacks, but really the commercial zone doesn't have setbacks except in the front and the front line is defined as the narrowest. But the Lindo doesn't actually be the definition of a street, so I don't think we have to worry about setbacks. You know, the parcels that are going to get smaller are relevant to minimum parcel size. There's one small parcel near Bay Street that can get bigger. So we don't have to worry about minimum parcel sizes setbacks. So. The findings that are required to be made by the city planner listed on page five, I I believe those can be made. And then the city engineer, like I said, the city engineer's approval is also required, but he's going to need some of this for that survey. Title reports and things like that. So that's been a condition of approval. It really doesn't affect. Anything else down there? No landscaping? No, there's no ground disturbance? Wastewater? It's not going to affect anything in brown. So. None of those regulations apply. So staff recommendation is for approval of the lot line adjustment. The city council did approve it in concept as the landowner as well. A portion of the lot line adjustment might be in the city's CDP jurisdiction. I forgot to mention that. So the Rancheria will need to request a consolidated. CDP. This doesn't make sense for the city issues. Coastal Commission has a process for. Standard conditions of approval again, recommendations of the city engineer shall be required. The survey will be completed to determine exact boundaries. Oh, and there was one other issue that came up. There's an easement. From Galinda to the pier, a public access easement that was granted to the city from Rancheria. That I wasn't aware of when the interpretive center was approved and. The the description isn't really good. It says northerly and easterly, so it could jog. But if it's a straight line, then the interpretive center. Could be within that public access easement. So if that's the case, that that would need to be surveyed as well and easement would need to be adjusted. If the interpretive center pushes on that easement and then all other permits. So the coastal development permits will be secured. Are there any questions?
All right, questions? Yeah, do you? Have any history on the Bay Street abandonment or not really?
Well, I had there, the city passed an ordinance in 1912. To abandon the Bay Street and I mean, that was before the pier was even constructed. So I, you know, I don't. Know, I think there's probably a minute somewhere in the box. I don't know the whole history. I, let's see, I think it was in. In the. Somewhere more in maybe in the 2000s. Yeah, I think it was noticed that it still shows up on the AP map. So the city re-recorded that, I believe, to to make sure that it was. Documented. So I think it's pretty clear that it's abandoned. It's just not clear. Near those areas, what parcels does area.
So I have just a couple of questions real fast. What parcel is the Galindo easement? And that's important as to make sure that if we were to look up that sort of description, would the easement be part of the legal description?
It should be. It should show up in the title report. Yeah, yeah. So if you look at the parcel map, it'd be 12, but really. So if you look, there's some dashed lines on this parcel map with the numbers 36, 37, 41, 42. Little triangle is 40. Those are the actual original parcels as was laid out in the 1800s. For the city of Trinidad. So I think those are actually, so it's probably on actually parcel 41. You know, I I've learned actually quite a lot about parcel maps versus, you know, actual parcels. I've always assumed these were. You could base a little bit, I know they're not accurate, but I didn't know they were usually. This inaccurate as these are. And really the parcels have no legal. Standing. It's just a tax. It's basically just a tax and land use. Thing. And and so these parcels don't actually have a legal. Basis necessarily. It's these underlying parcels that are illegal.
The the legal description.
Yeah.
So when I look at this. On that parcel map, it says 25 foot easement, city of Trinidad, and it said 727 two. Is that the easement we're talking about or is it something in addition to?
On which map? Sorry.
I guess it's this one, the parcel map, right?
Oh, yeah. So that is the easement that was granted by Hallmark to the city's stormwater outfall. So and it shows up as part of Galindo Street right of way, but it's not. I mean, again, that's incorrect. Incorrect on this map. It is just, but yeah, it went from Galindo to the city's stormwater outfall. That is different.
So the the two separate easements that we're talking about right there in that area. Okay. Oh, and then just one last question. I think you answered it, but I just want to confirm. That when I look at condition of approval four. So the city no easement from Galinda right of way to the pier will be served and delineated. If the interpretive center interfered with the easement, then it will need to be revised revised to the satisfaction of city council. You are referring to the easement and not the 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 location or the sign of the interpretive center.
That's correct. Yes. And like I said, the. You know, it's pretty, the description of the easement, yeah, it says from the center line at the mean high tide line of the pier to the center line of. The window and Bay Street would connect. But then it said, but from the pier to the window, it says in a northerly and easterly direction. So. It's not a good description as to is that northerly then easterly or is it north easterly? So it's really not clear. How that's written. So again, I think it just needs to be clarified as part of this process, really.
Does does that easement not, I mean, excuse me, isn't that easement senior to the potential development of? The interpretive centers?
Yes, yes. But I think, I mean. But I think the purpose is for public access and, you know, to have people walk across the lawn where there's already storage and buildings. It'd make more sense to put the easement, you know, on roadways that are already there. So I think it would make sense to move the easement as opposed to interpret.
And that was, and that was the. One of the conditions of approval when we approved interpretive center. That we could look at the, look at the easement and adjust it if necessary.
I didn't know about that.
That's what's confusing. What were we talking about then?
I think that was this Galindo. So it was, so that the city. So when we did that. Approval, we had recently just done a a landowner agreement with the Rancheria for the stormwater improvements that are on the Lindo right of way. And so I assumed it would be something similar, but in this case, the city attorney wanted. Actual land exchange. So it turned in the lot line adjustments that we got from these mentions.
With regard to the Galindo to the pier easement. It's the intent that that easement with the. Beltman of the lot line adjustment map, the that even it will be more accurately described.
Yes.
Sorry, I was just asking if if that easement would be more accurately described than it is currently. Rather than just vague direction.
Yeah, that would be. Maybe it's not city council. Maybe it's not something that has to go to the city council. Maybe it's to the attorney or to the engineer. Thank you, Mark, for creating that condition.
Do you have any? I've got what I think is a procedural question regarding the ordinance consistency where it states that. Section 16.241050 states that the planning commission shall approve, conditionally approve 49 lot line adjustment proposals. That's next record is that we didn't have to receiving recommendations from the city engineer. And we have not yet, is that this meeting then?
Yeah.
That we've not yet received recommendations from the city engineers?
No, because we just don't have the information. I think. The the expense to do the surveys and the title reports doesn't make sense to do that for lot line adjustment.
Is problematic in the context of that section that we don't have recommendations from the engineer yet?
I don't think so. I mean, they reviewed. I mean, they've been involved. In terms of, you know, our meetings with the Rancheria, they've been involved in the process.
So just, just to make sure it's clear in my mind. I I I think I understand exactly what what's going here, but there are still. A lot of. Open issues, I think, to be resolved. And it's not clear to me that. What's the breakpoint? Before this has to come back to us for some sort of additional review. I I it's kind of a nebulous question, but I I it just seems to me that this might come back to us. I just don't know. When and how or should we look at this once we have all the information?
I mean, if you want to review the final map, I mean, that wouldn't, that's fine. I think, I mean, I. I don't know if this is more helpful. I think I didn't provide this because I didn't want to add confusion. I think it shifted a little to the. East. But this is a pretty accurate representation of the parcels on the ground. So I think, you know, it's, it would be minor adjustments. That would be based on the survey. So I mean, if you want to set a boundary, you know, if it ends up being more than 1,500 square feet. If you, you know, if the parcel area is changed. So you could put some limits on it if you want.
The only comment I'd add at this point, just is to echo, excuse me, what Richard said, is that there's a lot of variables that are up in the air with this and. I'm struggling with being okay with making decisions, but it seems like we don't have all the ducks in a row that would speak that would. Support this and make this a much easier and and clear cut decision. I guess that's kind of just my thought right now. Anything else from the commissioners? I can see we have. Representation from the Rancheria if they want an opportunity to speak at all. The public come back if that works or?
Yeah, I mean, sort of going off what you two were saying. I mean, are we even positive that this section of the trail is on the interpretive property?
There are markers out on the ground. So, yeah, I I. Is there a requirement to enact? The.
You know, this record of survey in here, there shows a. I mean, there's a corner there at the north, but there's no one to this. It's the south end of that one. So I guess this is.
I mean, because that parcel was surveyed as part of the city's stormwater project. Make sure that the city's stormwater project is on that parcel. So I think, and like I said, the city engineer was was part of our onsite meetings and I know he has a pretty good idea of where that is.
Yeah, I have the Rancheria.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I have technical staff that is calling. And I'll say a couple of things, but I have got my surveyor who's called in and he might be able to help with some of these questions. And also Leslie Sanders, our land use transportation director.
Excuse me, can you introduce yourself?
Perfect.
Will you introduce yourself?
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Jackie Haasler Parmesan. I'm the CEO of Trinidad Rancheria. I've been with Rancheria since 2007. Been involved with all of the planning committee and everything at the harbor. It's begun over the last 16 years. So. This is one of the last projects to mitigate issues at the harbor. When we built the pier, the bait shop was directly on the pier almost. And so we got a permit to move part of it over where this now. The little shack that you see. And it was always the intention to build the interpretive center, which would remove three of the little. Puts that are down there. We had no idea that the Lindo Trail right of way did a little hell shaking. One of those shacks. And for us, the the easement would have been fine. It's the city attorney, as Trevor mentioned, was asking for a lot line adjustment. The other issue that we have is we have time sensitive funding for this project. We need to get coastal development permit. Completed and approved by October of this year. So we're on a tight timeframe. We don't have all the time in the world. This is all also gone to the city council. Previously, who approved it in concept. And so coming to the planning commission. After all of the survey, there were people working, attorney and travel and, you know, there's been a lot of work involved. It is a complex property and I understand that. As far as the easements go, they are part of the documents the title Rancheria holds to the property. And the interpretive center will not approach upon that easement to the pier. We have. Hundred percent agreement. We want the public to have access to everything. There as part of the purchase agreement. So. If we could ask specific questions, I believe Tony Orvor. He is a licensed surveyor. He met with Trevor and Eli and I and a representative from the city. Not sure what his name, but he was a surveyor. We agreed upon all of the points down there. So if you have really specific questions, Tony may or may not be able to answer them. I'm hoping he can. I would love to see this get approved tonight so we do not lose our funding waiting until June is really going to be problematic. Of course, we're going to give that coastal development permit submitted sometime within the next several weeks. So if you would, you know, consider all of the work that's gone into this, consider that it's the city attorney's request to change this. And it's, it's very simple when you look at the Lindo Trail and the little dog leg that goes behind one of the sheds. We're not, we're not closing anything. There's, it's not a public walking path that's going to be closed. That direct access to the pier is going to remain in place. So can you re-ask those specific questions? That the commissioners have. That the commissioners have?
My only question that was specific, I guess that Tony can refer that I guess it's just that we are sure that the trail is indeed on the Rancheria property and that, that property is, it is correctly mapped, but it seems like it is.
That the trail to the head, not trail?
Yes, the trail to the head.
Yes. Tony, are you with us?
Yes, I am. And I listened, I heard the question. So far as the location of the exhibit, it's based on record record monuments, based on the BLM retracement survey. And that trail does meander outside onto the Rancheria for that short segment. So I am certain that area is off.
Any other questions that Tony can answer that would help you to move this forward?
I have one just about the piece of land underneath the interpretive center. And I recognize it's up on the hill, but I know we've talked about access to the pier, but also concerned about access to Launcher Beach as one of the few beach launch locations.
That will remain open. Absolutely. There's, our current project is a stormwater runoff project. There's probably a lot of favors that are there to let that stormwater to infiltrate that access to like unusual, not be impacted, a hundred percent.
Questions for the applicant or the commissioners?
I'll just make a comment. This has already been in the city council, I recognize that. This is the agreement that we are working on. I guess my fundamentally, my, my concern is that I just want to make sure that as we go through this process, which I understand think the process, that there aren't some I gotchas. And I guess I would like to, I, I, I just would recommend that the project come back to us. I mean, it has to slow down, but when, when the survey is done, that maybe we would have an opportunity just to refresh ourselves and make certain we understand what's hap- has happened. And if nothing else, that's a good way of documenting for the public. All of this is going to transpire. And so
Could that be a condition of approval? Trevor mentioned doing it after the approval. So that the funds?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to slow down the project. I, I, I'm not trying to do that. I just think that from a, the public's standpoint, it would be very useful to have this documented so that we all see in one place the lot line, lot line adjustment and the new survey and any condition, any additional conditions that perhaps either the city engineer or the Rancheria might have in, in this project. That's, that's all I would like to see.
And what was that new survey show?
I, I would just like to make sure that we see all the, all of these things, the easements and the lot line adjustments and just to make sure that there aren't any issues. Again, I'm not suggesting that we slow down the project for that. I just think it would be useful to have that as a public record sometime in the future when they put together in one package.
It's my understanding, and Trevor, please help me here, correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that we can submit our coastal development permit. And it's a parallel process getting that lot line adjustment.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that you know, you could submit your CDP with just the city council's approval as, as the manager. So that shouldn't, it shouldn't stop you from submitting the CDP. Okay. You know, I, I think the coastal commission would want to see the approval of the lot line adjustment before they act. But yes, you could go ahead and submit. You know, I think we could do this as a condition of approval. I guess the catch is, well, if you've approved it and you come back and you don't like the map. I think it's really more what you're asking for, Richard. It's just an informational item. So I think staff is going to work all this out in terms of figuring out the exact boundaries and I think send that to you.
Yeah, I, I, I think, again, I'll try to do it a little bit more clearly. I just feel that it would be important to have this as a, I'll call it a public document, but part of a, a planning commission hearing so that people who are interested in understanding what has changed and what is going on is all in one place and they can, they can see it. But the intent is, that'd be the only intent.
So the, the current map that we did for it that worked on is only missing that easement?
Well, I think it's well, I mean, this trail hasn't been surveyed exactly where it is. I think which trailer, well, this, you know, I think that these you know, and, and when I was talking to Tony, I mean, he planned on doing a survey to figure out exactly where things are, to do the new legal descriptions. So I think it's really just seeing that final project. Okay, that, that would need to be completed anyway. Okay. So Tony, are you hearing that?
Yes, can I add a couple of things to this? Just to provide some clarity on the, on the exhibit that's being presented. So typically in, in the lot line adjustment process, there's a plot plan that's submitted and usually we like to create it from either, you know, field data or and or record data. In this instance, it was a combination of both. So the, the survey location, the survey monuments are located in the field. This map represents those locations. There may be some adjustment, very minor adjustments based on the actual field survey. And usually when it goes through that last, the second phase of the engineering review process, that the surveyor or the engineer, the reviewer, will review that and make sure that those adjustments are not egregious. That, you know, they conform to that original map as submitted for approval. And if there's any kind of large adjustments and stuff like that, then that would kind of trigger that going back to review. That's why we've spent a little more time tacking this exhibit down on the ground to be sure that that location reflects the actual location on the ground in the field. So does that help?
Yeah, I understand the process.
And will also the this is a rule that we're talking about Hallmark's, right easement, right? It's really proximate, so that'll get resolved?
Yes, we're talking about the easement that comes south out of Glendo Street for the walkway.
And just for my information, yeah, the, the plus minus, the eighty two, for example, over near the trail up to the head, is that a tolerance of accuracy or are those the lengths of those segments or what is that indicating? On your survey?
Oh, okay. Let me pull that up real quick. Just a second.
The, the packet, it's packet page twelve.
Those are areas?
Those are the areas?
Let me see. I'm, I'm not, I don't, I'm not seeing what you guys are seeing.
For example, if you look at the footprint of the proposed interpretive center building, right? You'll see those three numbers kind of orbiting around thirty seven plus minus seventy four plus minus sixty four plus minus. I was just want to understand what that
Yes, those are areas. Yeah, square feet, square feet. Yes. Those are
Those are the boundaries that help determine the square feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
The sides of the triangles. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're kind of cutting out there and I can't, I'm cutting out of mine in two, so I apologize.
That was a wonderful thing. Any other questions for the applicant? I have a quick question for, for Tony. In your licensed interpretation, the description of the easement between the pier and Glendo Street as northerly and easterly, how would you interpret that?
I would refer to my attorney. Because it, that, that language is very ambiguous. You go northerly and easterly and then connecting at an intersection point, south of Glendo to the center of the pier. Okay, so basically that thing delineates a straight line, but really, nobody walks that straight line, correct? And it doesn't really describe the width of that easement. It just describes kind of a general location. So it is ambiguous and it's hard to put on the ground. Nonetheless, it still does exist. So I think you know, that would be my response to that question.
Thanks. Commission, before we open for public comment?
Yes. My question for you folks is whether in these conditions that you're contemplating adding, is there anything that isn't already sort of included in item number two regarding recommendations of the city engineer?
Is that a question for me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony, it was not. It was for the other commissioners. Sorry.
Okay.
I would just say, for me, I think the, but if I heard Richard, what he's proposing, I, I like it is that it would still come back. There would be a physical document presented in a public meeting again. And that's, I don't see that in here necessarily through the conditions and it kind of goes off to the rest of the process. But by putting a condition in that it would come back before us.
And that's no problem for us if we can get conditional approval and you add that condition. That's no problem at all.
Yeah, that's all I was asking. And, and to, you know, to address more succinctly your comment about a condition of yeah, a lot of that's already included here. I'm, I'm just looking for an opportunity for the public to see the final outcome of all of this. And, and, and maybe I'm being a little persnickety, but a lot of times when we do projects, approve projects, they get accomplished and then people come back and say, well, whatever happened? Or what's the final result? Or, you know, is it done? I mean, even simple question like, is it done? So that's, that's all I'm asking or requesting if commission feels that way, but.
The surveyor would be responsible. We get the additional information. We would submit it to Trevor. It would come back to the planning commission for approval. As each of those items, you would have approval for it. Anyway.
Well, the lot line adjustment is what it is. This is just an opportunity for the public to see the final outcome of what, what we have done.
But my point though, Richard, is it's not any different. It's a condition of approval in that list that will be added, which will, we will satisfy.
Yes, if the commission agrees, yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thanks. Okay, it's time to open up for public comments.
Very good evening, commissioners. Question, Kenny, four six two Ocean Avenue, I'm in favor of this project. At the last meeting, it seemed like a fair trade. Of course, the question in the northeast, you stand in the center of the pier. Get in and look. It's Glendo Street trip. Basically, with these, you look to the north and to the east. Remember, we involve Hallmark, Phil, the trailer, the head.
Any other post comments? Jerry? Jerry, please go ahead.
Is that for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. It is difficult and I'm sorry I didn't get to hear Mr. Kenny's comment. I just had a couple of questions again about process. One, this seems it's new change to the plan that was presented. And so it's new information for the planning commission to consider. My questions are, why did the attorney recommend a lot line adjustment versus just an easement? I think that's really important to ask because an easement is certainly still a, a good avenue, I think. So I'm wondering why he recommended a lot line adjustment? Which the land then becomes part of Trinidad Rancheria and vice versa. And I think we want to be careful about, about that a little bit. If I, I was a commissioner, I would be careful about that. The second question I have is, I don't know which commissioner, I'm sorry, didn't catch the name, had mentioned that in the policy, it says they need to have the engineer's recommendation. And I think a proposal or is being presented today without that recommendation. And I would caution that to happen for two reasons. You should have the full picture of this new information. Second, when you make an exception sometimes to a policy, it sets up precedents to make an exception again at some time. And you have to decide and have some good cause and reason when an exception is being approved. So that might be one thing you need to think about. Are you requesting an exception to a policy? And if I'm wrong in what I heard, please correct me. The third question I have is this, I'm, I'm assuming it's undeveloped land on both parts. And that makes it a little easier. And if there's no if access with this lot line adjustment is going to be maintained, I would certainly make sure that that's in writing for your public access. Those are my comments at this time. I hope I was clear in coming through to you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I, I'm going to take the first one and leave the other two to Trevor. So Trevor and I and our city attorney, Russ Gans, had, and the city engineer, Steve Allen, had talked about this and the reason that our attorney suggested to have the lot line adjustment instead of the easement is that he felt that the city would still have a liability if someone was injured there or whatever, like going in and out of the interpretive center. So he felt that it would be better for the city not to have that liability. That's on the trip.
Yeah, I can answer the question about the procedural. One, the, the city engineer was involved in slamming this lot line adjustment. So even though I don't have a formal recommendation, we all agreed out there onsite and in staff meetings to this lot line adjustment and you know, it's, it's we still need the city engineer's approval. So that's one of the conditions of approval. So he has to review the final documents, make sure that they're all technically correct, meet the city's requirements. So, so there is a condition of approval to that the city engineer will review and approve the, the final that the city engineer will review and approve the the final documents before they're recorded. Um let's see, and then undeveloped land, this is um, the areas are actually developed. So the portion of Galindo is where sort of the oil um response equipment is now down in the harbor. Does that sort of grassy area where the bait shop, it's sort of the um eastern portion of of that grassy area where the bait shop is. And then on the other side, it includes the Trinidad Head Trail.
My last question, and I'm I'm sure that it's a difficult one to think about for the Trinidad Rancheria. Um has there been consideration to modify the square footage of the developed um new center so that this lot line adjustment would not need to happen? Um and thank you so much.
We did discuss that at the at the hearing for the interpretive center. And determined that it needed to be the size and location that it is.
But but for clarification, again, that's only dealing with one side of a lot line adjustment. The other side of the Trinidad Head Trail, that is necessary. Correct? I mean, that 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 then puts the 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 trail onto city property.
Yeah, so then it so then it has the benefit of correcting that, you know, trail that the city maintains um that's not on city property. Yes.
Right, yes, okay. All right, any other public comment? I can bring it back to the commissioners. Any other discussion thoughts?
Uh just to respond to Sherry's comment regarding access um down through there. I mean, I I guess I can sympathize with her concern. And and wanting to preserve access to Launcher Beach and get that right. Um but I feel like that's this is not the their quote. The time to include that in this project has already passed, I guess, is my.
Um just a question on the CDP process for the Rancheria. Um your understanding, Trevor, and you're well versed obviously in in CDPs and the coastal commissioners, you don't see anything that would get in the way of them being able to apply based strictly off of the council's approval of the adjustment?
No, so um the the application would have to include a a letter or something from the city council authorizing the Rancheria to apply for this project on city property, um which I'm sure the Rancheria could get. Um I think they could probably submit their CDP at any time, but I think it's cleaner to just have have the lot line adjustment approved by the city. Because it's still the coastal commission is still gonna review the lot line adjustments themselves and make easements and
And I also appreciate the precedent setting was a note I had made and I appreciate what you said about the engineer having been a part of this already. And that we're kind of lacking a formal report versus having this done in a absence of the engineer's awareness of what's going on and what the intent is.
Yeah, I mean, her, I mean, I guess if this were a private project, if the city engineer wasn't involved, then I would have sent a referral and gotten, you know. So we need, you know, we'll need the title reports and the descriptions to review again. That's pretty standard. But then in this one, I didn't send a referral because he was part of the planning and decision on his law.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I'm trying to put together some words for condition number six. And uh so something like this, if this makes sense, Trevor and after receiving the updated survey and city engineering recommendations, the project is to be reported out in a future PC set in for public use. Maybe I don't like the word. For the ben- thank you very much. For the benefit of the public. Did you get that?
Yeah, will you read this? So after receiving the updated survey and city engineer recommendations.
Okay, to be re uh to be uh reported out in a future planning commission session for the benefit of the public.
Like to make a motion to go with it?
All right, so based on application materials, information, and findings included in the staff report and based on public testimony, I move to adopt the information required findings as it as amended in the staff report and prove the lot line adjustment as submitted and as conditioned below.
With added conditions.
Uh I didn't I say that?
With the amended, yeah.
With amended conditions?
Yes. All those in favor?
I I I.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to agenda item number two for the twenty twenty three dash oh five CDP for three projects. You'll take a brief pause here for about
Um great, it's okay. I have some materials that I'll be talking about.
Please, thanks, Bryce. All right, Trevor, staff report, please.
So this is a continuation to some degree of the item from the last month where um you authorized the temporary temporary closures of the Parker Creek and Axolindran Trails that I had issued an emergency permit for in February. So we have since that time, the management team has continued to meet the coastal commission staff, um other agency representatives and um professional staff to um discuss solutions focusing on short term solutions. So we've been meeting about weekly. We have another site visit um walking around down there and with various representatives. And so um this is a plan we have come up with. Um again, it's it's a short term solution to protect the sensitive areas down beach for the summer. So um just as a a quick summary, there's there are several elements to the project. Um fencing at the top and bottom of the Axolindran Memorial Trail. Um in terms of the temporary closure, um the six month closure starting from the effective date of permit would be um it would expire on November ninth. And um we will be reporting monthly at at the different meetings um to in terms of progress um on on what's happening with the trail repairs. The the Ancestral Society has a grant from Seventh Generation Fund to study the redesign of the trail. Particularly re potentially rerouting the bottom of the trail so that it's less unstable. Um so that is that is ongoing and we expect that report in June, July at the latest. Um so we'll be looking at um, you know, longer longer term solutions for the base of that trail. In the meantime, for for this summer, for now, until the the closures lifted, um the city's proposing fences at the top and bottom of the trail. So about where the barriers are handled at the top as well as another barrier at the bottom above, you know, where it's roded, um so that people can come down Parker Creek and try and go back up that trail. And the proposed fencing would be deer fencing. Um that was chosen for a couple of reasons. One, you can see through it, so maybe the aesthetic impacts are a little less. And we're hoping that's less likely that we, you know, people go around it, over it, or cut it. So that's why that was chosen. And there will be signage placed um at the top and bottom redirecting people to either Parker Creek Trail or the harbor area to access beaches. Um in addition, um as part of their grant requirements, the Ancestral Society needs to place an acknowledgement for the grant. So we'll include that sign in this design review. That sign is twenty four by thirty and will be a a green background. Girl signs like the no collection signs. And the the bridge is is there. Um third, physical and visual barriers along to the left where the toe is exposed. Um, you know, originally, we're kind of looking at an area about three hundred fifty to four hundred feet long. And then the the willow willows and the vegetation has grown in quite a bit. So that whole area isn't necessarily so exposed anymore. Um but we also don't want to just fence off such a small area that it's not bringing attention to one area. Um so the exact length hasn't been determined yet, but probably somewhere in the two to three hundred foot range is what we're looking at from around the the base of the Axolindran Trail and on east. Um the the um will, part of the proposal includes placing Jeep netting, which is an erosion control matting, and placing that along the the toe of the bluff and up the exposed areas and then just out along the base, cover up any materials the miners left off. And then I'll help keep more things from coming off and kind of cover those exposed areas. And then placing materials that are on the beach, rocks and brickwood over the Jeep matting to hold it, make it look more natural. And then um a a fence as well, so like a wood wood slatted fence. We're looking at um through what's called sand fencing, which is a fencing more than four feet high. Um it'll be placed um along that area east to west. Um and it'll be placed as high along the beach as possible. There's you can sort of see it transitions from sand to to rocks. And so right around that area is where it will be placed, which is about, you know, ten to fifteen feet from the base of of the bluff. Um but well above the, maybe not well above the main high tide line, but above the main high tide line. And then four, um repairing the the base of the Parker Creek Trail. And that's again using materials that are on the beach. So this is not a full repair. Um this is just um piling rocks and other materials that are already on the beach um to make the slope a little bit more gradual and safe for trail goers since we're gonna be directing people to use that trail. Um the city has already gotten two two bids, um one from Samara Restoration, one from Robin and the Action Agency um to do to get some hand crews down there and and do the work. And so and the management team is gonna be meeting again to tomorrow to discuss those bids and hopefully um get those guys scheduled as soon as possible. Um, you know, we plan, we plan on reopening the trail. Regardless of what are all done. But the work staff can do some of the work of the fencing of Axolindran Trail. Yeah, I just um, you know, this is something we've we've met and we've talked a lot about. Um, you know, the the coastal commission is on board with it, um, which I think is saying quite a bit. And they definitely have concerns about the trail closures. They want the Parker Creek Trail opened as soon as possible. Um and they're willing to let the the Axolindran Trail be closed temporarily, only temporarily. And I think um, like other people have mentioned, there are some other trail closures and the primary mandate is is public access. So um I think they're gonna keep us keep us on our toes with that. You know, it's a it's a difficult location. It's a sensitive location. You know, we've we brainstormed a lot of different options and and had to reject um, you know, other other things for a variety of reasons. So I think this is you know, it's it's the best compromise um that everybody can agree on um moving forward protecting this area this summer. So I think it's, you know, it's a it's a general consensus that this is our best option at this time. And um, you know, it's it is it is temporary. Uh we'll get the Parker Creek Trail reopened. Um it will protect um sensitive areas. Um I think it can be found to be consistent with like the zoning. Um city engineers is overseeing the design and putting together the materials. But key point one is it is in an area where policy sixty nine applies. So that does require we all descend into, I'm sure I, which obviously they are in favor of this. Uh but also the state historic preservation officer and the Rancheria. So I sent out a letter. I'm working on those those approvals. So it does, it does require, the project requires use permit findings again because it's in an open space area because it's new structures and grading. There are no exemptions in space areas. The Parker Creek Trail repair is in special environments. That's a little bit different. So the rest of it is all in space areas. Um also design review because of these structures. So these findings are included in the staff report. On the city engineer recommended grading permit. So it's a it's a coastal open permit. It's a use permit. Rating permits. So those are all the findings that that are being included and made. Uh as for conditions of approval, again, this is this is temporary. Um I included conditions that the fencing on the Axolindran Trail will have to be removed within two weeks of the expiration of closure, whenever that is. So the the planning commission could extend it beyond the the November ninth, but that's where it stands now. Uh the barrier along Old Home Beach will be checked at least every two weeks and within twenty four hours after a high tie of seven and a half feet of wire. There's about one of those a month. Um just to make sure that the that the material is staying in place and not getting washed away. And then city, the York Tribe has offered to provide cultural monitors during the work. Um the city will ensure that um they are informed of project scheduling so that they can be on site during around the street. So those are the conditions of approval. Um this doesn't include any additional trail closures. Those were approved last month. This is what.
Or we, I just had a procedural question as we take bites out of this. Are we able to approve this in a more piecemeal fashion? Could we go location by location? Just a question, just to see if that's procedurally okay. I think that for me personally, that would help clarify the understanding and really kind of put some controls on some of this.
Yeah, you could approve portions of it and deny portions of it. You could revise some of the things or change the conditions. But yeah, I think you could probably you could approve a portion and continue portion if you wanted to do that, to do that. Is that what you're asking?
More just, I'm just thinking in the future, because odds are this may come before us again, I guess. Or seeing it out by location instead of all in one thing, because the overlap makes it more complicated, I think, than it needs to be if we could carve it up.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I simply, I mean, you could call it A, B, and C might be one way to divide it out and then you can have separate motions for A, B, and C.
That's kind of, okay. Okay. Commissioners.
I guess one, one thing I guess that I've found, it's not necessarily specific to this project, I guess, but thinking about our, the trail closure that we dealt with last month. I guess from, from a planning commissioner's perspective, I mean, this project, it's, I feel like it's being, as it's being presented to us, it's being presented as like some effort to improve public safety and improve bluff stability. But like, I think it's, it's quite obvious that that's not the actual intent of this. And so, because it really is. And so I think it's difficult for commissioners, or I'll speak for myself, excuse me, it's difficult for me as a commissioner to weigh the situation, not knowing the complete picture. And I recognize that it has to do with these confidential archaeological resources that are potentially present, have are near the site. And my experience working with confidential archaeological resources, the regulating body, I guess, if that's what we're gonna call ourselves, is very familiar and has access to these confidential records so that they know whether the project that's being proposed is effective in preserving those records or those resources. And and I guess as a commissioner, like, I'm not getting that information. And I find that frustrating. I recognize that's difficult in a public setting. And I, I mean, maybe one solution for that is to have like a closed planning commission meeting where we can actually discuss the real issues here. But obviously, that's also very awkward for the public, so. I don't even know if there's an avenue for that in the coastal planning process. Like, is this a systemic issue? Or do we have an avenue to, like, maybe properly address this? Because reflecting upon the meeting last month, like, public and the planning commission, or excuse me, the public and myself as a planning commissioner had been led to believe that these trail planners were for public safety and last stability. But like, that's not the case. And I find that frustrating.
I, I understand that. You know, I think, you know, I think Bryce Kenny said at the last meeting that, I mean, we all know that it's a, it's a sensitive cultural site. You know, and it's not about protecting necessarily a specific resource. It's resources that are potentially exposed. And that's why it's kind of general at this point. And it's, it's really, it's really to keep people away from.
Okay, so actually, the items that you mentioned, it's a combination of all of them. Okay, so first of all, the Axalindran Memorial Trail, that, you know, the steps and so on, there's a lot of areas where it is awkward going down. And then of course, way at the bottom, pretty unsafe the way it is. But at the same time, that is in the half acre study area. And as a result, a grant was obtained, as Trevor was saying, from the Seventh Generation. In addition, they were able to obtain some money from the Coastal Conservancy so that this way they can reroute the base of the trail, the toe of the trail, so that it would be safer. And like I said, the steps, I mean, you know, I've gone down it several times recently just because I was going down there to inspect the beach area and see how it looked with, you know, with the, you know, other people that were you know, from staff and maybe like engineers, our city engineer, city planner, geologist and so on. So that's that one. Now, the Parker Creek Trail, it's fine until you get to the base. And the base of it, I wouldn't really say it's unsafe, but it is dangerous because it is muddy, it's rocky, and it's easy to slip there. I know with both of those trails, when I'm going back up, I'm actually, you know, holding on to whatever rock or whatever, just to make sure that I don't lose my balance. Personally, I don't want to end up lifting the pile. But anyway, that's, so what's gonna be happening there is that there's a huge log way at the base of the Parker Creek Trail. So it was suggested that if that log was removed, that the trail could be safely gradually taken down in where that log is. So that instead of where the rocks and the mud and stuff currently are, it would be gradually going down where that log is and then safely getting to the beach. Also, part of the problem with the Parker Creek is because of the Axalindran. So in other words, we want to get beach access. But if we say, okay, you know, this trail is closed, use that trail. So if we're directing people to Parker Creek, we want to make sure that we're not directing people where they end up getting injured and then saying, you know, you told us to go there and we got injured. So we want to make it as safe as possible. The other part of it is on the beach itself. So as Trevor was saying, so putting the jet netting on top of the area that has erosion. And then also adding a fence right by there to keep people from about three hundred feet. Yeah, I mean, an area, so it's about three hundred feet long, but right up towards the bluff. Certainly, if kids went there and played around there, you know, it's, it's possible where someone could get injured because you never know how unstable it is. Because it clearly is, and I'm hesitant about what Trevor was saying, you know, being rocks or whatever, it's probably gonna end up being towards the bottom because it's pretty vertical, you know, and it's hard to put rocks on something that's vertical. So anyway, like I said, it's really a combination of all of them. I wouldn't single anything out. But yes, you know, the chair I study areas down there. And, and that's why it is even called Old Home Beach, because that used to be their old home, that area. So also from a city standpoint, we don't want to have, number one, people getting injured anyway. But also, number two, you know, have disturbance of any cultural resources. It, it's not good for us. And that's why it was suggested in there, and I just came up with the idea with the game cameras, but that's something, it's just a thought. But, but in other words, you know, if someone is there where they shouldn't be, then, you know, clearly, we want to be able to find out, okay, what was going on? You know, so hopefully, everything will work out well. But I, I'm looking at it from the standpoint that we want to have access to the beach open by Memorial Day. We want to direct people from Axalindran Trail to Parker Creek Trail. We want to make sure that the Parker Creek Trail, the toe of it especially, is as safe as possible. It really is gonna be a lot better access than it currently is. And, and this way, it, it's best for everybody. I mean, whether people talk about liability or not, we just don't want to see anybody get injured anyway. So it, it is a possible problem. You know, if, if someone does get injured, then they complain and, and people are sue happy, even though, you know, there may be some law that might protect us. But ultimately, people do file lawsuits and then it's up to the court as to, you know, what happens to someone. But I just want you to know that we're looking at it in a global way. The other part of it is that we're having these chair I management team meetings, which are composed of the city, of the Chair I Ancestral Society, of the Uroq Tribe, of the California Coastal Conservancy. We've also added the California Coastal Commission. And then we have our city engineer, our city planner, and myself, and our grant, our grant fee president. So basically, it, it's been hard trying to, you know, move this whole group. You know, this is basically what Trevor is indicating, is we're finding areas of consensus. And, and this is a way to open the beach. And it's, well, you know, I mean, to have the beach accessible and to have a trail that would safely get people up and down to the beach. So again, I'm looking at it globally, you know, in that sense, rather than just focusing on one thing or another, because it is a combination of things. And in order to, number one, get it done by Memorial, by Memorial Day and have the beach open and accessible by a trail. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, you understood that. So, okay, anything else that you guys have, I'll be here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, Eli, I guess. But I mean, my only sentiment in response to that is that sorry that the safety is, I mean, the Parker Creek Trail, I've been down there a few times since it's been closed. I mean, we all know that whenever you take, when you walk on the trail, you take some risks. And like, I understand what you're saying about people being sue happy. Absolutely, people are. And even if we're in a riot, like, it's a major headache for the city. But I guess in this case, like, the Parker Creek Trail is that, I'd say. However, I'm all for approving and maintaining the trail. That's, I mean, absolutely, I mean, and making it as safe as possible is a great thing. But I didn't, in my opinion, didn't think that it was so unsafe that it would be closed.
I do have, oh geez, I hope it's a quick question about the updates on progress to date. Is that just that there's been decisions made about opening dates and materials to use? Are there other updates that are just as well?
Yeah, well, I think primarily this, you know, narrowing down this plan. You know, so we, like I said, we've met weekly since the last meeting. You know, we started throwing out some ideas and putting together a plan, did a site visit to kind of refine that plan. And then at the last meeting, sort of had a, I mean, it's, it's not a voting body. We don't vote, but it's, you know, no one had any objections to this proposal. Everybody was, you know, in favor of being forward with it. So that's, so that's the update in terms of that. These, these last meetings, since the last meeting, since our last planning mission meeting, have really focused on this sort of short-term solution. We haven't beyond that at this point. Like I said, the city engineer kind of developed a little bit more of a formal written description, a list of materials, and then city manager got quotes for the work from G firms. We'll be meeting again tomorrow. I'm deciding on which one of those two to go forward with, probably whichever one can schedule it the soonest. That'd be my assumption. And then, so that's really what that's been focused on. And then, you know, just wanted to, but also, you know, the the ancestral site with their grant has formally contracted with GHD to do the study of the base of the trail. So they are actively working on that. We haven't discussed specifics at, you know, our meetings in the last month. But they do expect a report, it's scheduled to come out in June. Let's say July. So we are expecting to get that. That about covers what we
In those, in those discussions, is there any proposed timeline for reopening the Axalindran Trail?
No, we have not talked about that. You know, I think you know, the rerouting of the base is probably a longer term exercise potentially in terms of doing the studies and the permitting and the other review to do something like that. So I, I think it would be worth discussing possible shorter term solutions with the existing alignment. We haven't talked about that yet, but I think it would be
Richard? Well, first of all, I'll start with an editorial coming up. One of the things that has been disturbing to me has been the lack of any action on management, Chair I management area. That was approved in two thousand and seven, that management plan. And ten years later, we are still almost in the same position. But I really feel that the, that the, the progress that's been made in the last couple of very, very good. And I'm, I'm actually optimistic that maybe we'll get some things done. So that's one reason why I feel pretty good about the, the way in which the team is working. I just had a couple of simple questions, I think. One is, it's my understanding, and I think you just clarified this, I hadn't heard this before, but the, the grant that TAS has is the money, or that the grant is going to GHD. Now, is that just for the study to propose options for rerouting?
I believe so, yeah, I recommend, I recommend.
So as much as I like the progress that's going on right now, if you really think about it, that trail's not gonna be open until next year at the very earliest. Because we have several months for the investigation and options. And that puts us close to the fall. No one's gonna want to do any work in the winter time. So, you know, I just don't think that the trail's gonna be open for some time. Now, we are going to look at it, though, in November. Is that correct?
Yeah, so your, your approval for the temporary closure from April would expire on November ninth. So, you know, we would, depending on what happens in the next few months, you know, we might propose extending that closure. Um, it did include a clause that you could extend it for good cause if progress can be shown to be made. Um, but yeah, like I said, I, I think, um, it, it would be worth exploring shorter term options for that as well.
I can add a little bit to that. Uh, so, uh, first of all, the seventh generation, uh, grant, I'm not sure the exact amount, but my impression is that it's simply being used to help pay for the G H D to do the report. Not that it's that, not that that's all that's going to be done with the grant. So my feeling is that other, you know, improvements will be done with the grant. It's just that the funding for G H D's report is going to come from them.
Well, o- o- okay, I get that, but the, the wording that we have is that this is a grant for restoration options. And, and I read options as not necessarily boots on the ground doing work. So that's, that's my concern.
Yeah. The other thing I'd like to mention is, and Trevor will say 100%. Uh, you know, what we did last, uh, month was basically set the two months and the six months. So it, it, I mean, naturally it has to be revisited by November 9th. But once the report is done, possibly June to July, it could be scheduled at a prior meeting, you know, before waiting till November. Uh, you know, to show you what the progress is and what some of the options are and maybe if I'm right. But I, I agree with you, Richard. My feeling is that, uh, you know, any improvement would be done next year. And, and my goal is to have the trail open ideally, just like this one is, if possible, by Memorial Day. Uh, you know, so in other words, in a year, I, I think that we should have those improvements and have it open. If it happens sooner, that's fine, but ideally I, I think it shouldn't go more than a year. And, and, and if it needs to be rerouted, then if that can be done within a year, fine. Otherwise, like Trevor said, in the short term, if there is a possible way to reopen it and there's agreement to reopen it, uh, you know, and, and do the temporary fix at the bottom as the trail exists now, that's possible. Uh, but it does go through the dry study area and therefore we do need to get buy-in, uh, because it is in, in that area. We, we certainly don't want people deviating from that trail, uh, you know, and partly when there is work being done. Now, as Richard had indicated, like, one of the things that was suggested before is to have railing. So ideally we can get railing that put in during this period, hopefully within the year. And the other thing, like I said, the, the steps, the, the steps are quite worn down. And, and we need to get some new steps for the most part there, uh, to, to make it safe. Because right now it, it's easy to tread, uh, you know, I'm not saying that people, uh, you know. Like, wh- when I would be walking down there, it's possible trip if I'm not really paying attention. Uh, you know, and, and there is at least one or two spots where, um, it's holding the, uh, wood. This is actually like some bars, some metal bar. And, and that's exposed where people can easily get their foot caught in that metal, you know, and drip. But you really have to be pretty much paying attention. Uh, but, uh, yeah, navigating the trail, if you're paying attention until you get to the base of it, if, if, you know, it's, it's, it's fine as far as, you know, being navigable, but, but you gotta be paying attention. Uh, and, uh, and not sort of like, uh, you know, like I'll stop and take some photos. But sometimes people still looking at their phone when they're walking, uh, even crossing streets. And, and as a result, uh, you know, accidents could happen. But I think the overall improvement of redirecting the base of the trail, of adding the railing and of, uh, replacing the wooden steps. I, I think that those three things would really enhance the, uh, the trail.
And then, uh, just add, you know, we did talk about, could we leave the Axolingren Trail partially open? Cause it's really just the base, um, and, you know, we decided that wasn't a good option because people get, you know, all the way down there and then it's closed and then they're going to go off the trail to find another because they don't want to go back. We thought that was too big of a risk, um, to getting the trail partially.
Anything else, Richard?
Um, I was just curious, um, you sent a letter to the state historic preservation officer. Have you received any comments back from them at this point?
No, I, I.
Or do you see any problems with?
I wouldn't expect any issues from them. They don't usually comment. Um, I just said that, you know, we're, we're trying to expedite this and get it done by Memorial Weekend. I said, if you, if I don't hear from you by, I think this Friday, the 19th, all of us, we have no objection.
And if it's necessary, I kind of concur with, uh, what you said. About, uh, maybe parsing this out. Or if there's anything that we can do to keep the Parker Creek Trail progress, uh, on, on track. Uh, that would be really good if not to get it done sooner. Um. And so as we go through this, if there's things that we need to parse out, I'm willing to do that. There may not be a need.
A few tabs on the document, sorry. Uh. We're just disclosing some extra part of communication. Couple members of the community have approached me about this agenda item. Um, one frustration just to share that was voiced is that the notice of the meeting was posted. And in that notice, it states that the documents are available, but they're not available until later. So maybe just tightening up that language to make sure that's what posted. Does it send somebody looking for a document that doesn't exist? Um, and they were offering opinions on primarily the game camera presence. Um, a few editorial moments and then I'll get into kind of the meat. Um, one, I apologize, I was not present at last month's meeting. That was the day of my surgery and I regret that. I was not present. I, I truly do. Um, because it's a very important issue to me and, uh, I really, really wished I'd been there for that. Um. An observation just i- in, in the document itself, right? Parker Creek was closed for safety and I appreciate liability concerns. I will offer the opinion that if the city's in the business of operating trails, they're in the business of assuming liability. Um, there's a lot of trails around this community in state and county area that are in similar or worse conditions. And that liability is just assumed and, and people have that. Again, that's just an opinion. Um, this document speaks to Parker Creek being closed, but then also speaks to the fact that it will be reopened, regardless of whether or not the work is done. And I just see a total disconnect between those statements in the document. Um, and I, and I just do not comprehend that, uh, position, uh, by the, the city or the team. Um.
I just wanted to note, you know, ideally to try to address something like that. I guess the proper wording would have been that Parker Creek would open even if everything that we're planning is not. So, so, so in other words.
That was the point I was making exactly.
Yeah. So, so, so what I'm saying is, is that, uh, in our meetings, we, we're having set the goal to open it by Memorial Day, to have access to the beach open by then. And to have some work done, in other words, implications, we don't have to have everything done. Possibly the fencing down along the beach, if that's not in, that it's possible to be open. I did already purchase a fence and both, uh, companies that had been, uh, placed a bid, their proposal have indicated that they can do it within a few days. So, uh, so I'm really optimistic, but the bottom line, which was good, was the fact that coming out of that meeting, there was consensus that number one, have access to the beach. Number two, have Parker Creek open. And number three, not the burden that, that, okay, everything's not done, we can't open. So, so we, we were encouraged and we were given that opportunity to make as much, uh, improvements as we can, but not to necessarily have opening Parker Creek held up by it's not finished, you know, we're not going to open.
Yeah, I can give you back a question.
Sure.
Could you describe the scope of activities that might be covered by this potential additional emergency C D P? A lot of things to get completed before Memorial Day.
Yeah, um, that's a little bit, it's a little convoluted. It's actually coastal commission staff are the ones who suggested it. And again, they want work done and get Parker Creek Trail open by Memorial Weekend. So, because this appeal period, even if you approve everything tonight, appeal period is going to run faster. Okay. So if we can get a crew done, if that means I have to issue an emergency permit, um, I can do that, but it has to be the minimum necessary to mitigate emergencies. So I think, um, you know, what we were talking about is the, um, in particular, the jeep madding, um, would be one of the primary things. Um, I think the fencing on Axolingren Trail could go in. The, the repairs at the base of Parker Creek Trail, you know, that maybe isn't critical. And then certainly the, the fencing along. So, um, so the fencing on Axolingren Memorial Trail, the jeep madding. And, and if we can get the work on the base of Parker.
All right, uh. In the staff report, you mentioned that, uh, signs be placed on both fences indicating trails closed, directing people to alternate beach access. I assume that's presuming that there is alternate beach access, which there currently is not.
Well, so be directing people to either Parker Creek Trail or the harbor area after.
So more just not specific access to, uh, old home beach, but just how to get to a beach.
Yeah, but Parker Creek Trail would be accessed.
Theoretically, right?
Yes.
Um, uh, just, uh, an observation in the staff report, you mentioned the, the concept of the possibility of other readily available fencing. Due to time and weight constraints, I assume that's the snow fencing. Um, Eli, is that the fencing you've purchased or ordered as the snow fencing? And is that wood slat? Because in the actual, um, design review criteria, it states that it will be wood.
Yeah, it is wood.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Uh, I had a question to help me understand about the fencing juke monitoring. This is on page 19, but we talked about, uh, the fencing will be removed prior to the first winter storms, after Labor Day weekend and before the end of September. Am I understanding that basically that's saying after Labor Day weekend, no later than the end of September? Is that what that's supposed to mean?
Yeah.
Before? Okay. Um.
And, and we, we discussed, um, whether the jeep madding should be removed. And we're going to get jeep madding that does not have, um, you know, plastic or, you know, foreign materials in it. And so that's going to stay because plants will grow up through it during the summer. So we don't want to.
That point already. Was there any, the jeep madding, the stuff that will get, um, in place, but won't necessarily be captured by vegetation down at the base, right? There's going to be potentially a little bit. Is that correct or no?
Yeah. So yeah, yeah, it's, you know, it's pretty steep in areas. Um, so, you know, it's usually the U pin, like kind of staples, um, that are used to, to pin that down. So do that as well as we can on the steeper areas. Then it will come out, um, you feet into the rocky area at the base of the slope because some materials have come down and so cover.
Just a thought on that. Is there any risk of that eroding and getting into the harbor and then becoming entangled hazard for boats? Anything else? I saw that you said a senior had that concern.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's been a major concern that we've talked about, um, in terms of bringing foreign materials. So, um, you know, that's why we're really just trying to stick to materials that are already on the beach. Um, I think the jeep madding is not seen as, you know, it deteriorates pretty quickly. Um, you know, I don't think it, you know. Coastal Commission certainly was worried about entanglement hazards with different kinds of, of ropes and fences. They didn't seem to be worried about that. So I'm not a necessarily an expert.
And I will just say, I also have, uh, a great deal of concern over the game cameras. That's a, that's a big sticking point for me personally. Um, there's some guidance as to anything about how we use, who would view it, that kind of stuff. And I'm not ready to. Set up, and I, I understand the purpose. I understand the sensitivity. I understand the intent behind it. But just for me, that's a, that's a big stopping point, um, as this is presented tonight. Up there, um.
Yeah, I'm just going to mention that, uh, other than the fact that, uh, cameras were mentioned at the meeting, but. And no, nobody has said so far, yes, let's get that. So on the list that, that our city engineer prepared, that was not on the list. But I, I see your point that, you know, by having it included in here, that's.
Right. The option is included in here as presented. So it didn't make a little further than just discussion, I'd say.
Yeah. And actually what Trevor was trying to capture, because I, I think in a prior one, she had mentioned about, uh, like plants, but that's been turned down at the meeting, you know, but, but she, she was trying to keep it like broad so that it wouldn't like, it went, once you do the, the, at least for the prior one, prior meeting, when you do the two month and the six month, uh, you know, you want to have it a little bit broad so that we wouldn't have to come back for it to you every single point of saying, oh, we wanted to add the finances. We want to add the cameras, but, uh, uh, there really hasn't been any consensus about the cameras so far.
Anything else from, uh, any commissioners or staff before we open it up to public comment? If I haven't completely lost track of these.
Uh, yeah, I've got, uh, I guess a few points, which is that if that jeep madding is not to be removed after summer, which I think it says it will at various points in the staff reports, but it's not really a temporary project, right?
Well, it's not that it deteriorates pretty.
So all of us. Like that is the. When the year is gone?
Uh, again, I'm not, you know, I don't know the technical specs, but yeah, my understanding is that it breaks pretty quickly up.
Just another question for clarification. So there's really going to be, I want to make sure I understand these fences. Uh, there, there's going to be a metal type fence, which will be at the top of the bluff and at the bottom of the trail. And then in addition to that, there will be the so-called snow fence or sand fence, which will be on the beach side of those other fences.
That's correct. So top and bottom of the Axolingren Trail, um, you know, extending into the vegetation either side. That is proposed to be your fencing where you can do it, um, that blends into the environment, um, and keeps people out and, um, the fencing on the beach, yeah, with the wood slats.
So I, I don't recall from last meeting or last month's meeting, uh, or maybe, maybe it's embedded in here and I don't see it. But I mean, those metal fences have got to be anchored somehow. And so that to me is a big deal in terms of development and potential disturbing of cultural resources.
So, yeah, so they would be metal, you know, like six, sorry, put metal stakes pounded into the ground. So, um, you know, again, we, we did talk about other fencing options. And this one sort of presents the least amount of disturbance. Um. And it's, I mean, uh, again, uh, the T A S earns for it.
Well, that's the only thing that's keeping me on track here is understanding that there are multiple organizations which have had, well, have, that are working together. So, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'll open up to public comments. Bryce, did you have any?
Well, I can, of course, yeah, everyone. Yeah. All right, I'm using it. I would, I would ask there, I could reserve a couple of minutes of revival so I can speak again after. Cause I'm sure our public comment is what. I would, I would ask there, I could reserve a couple of minutes of revival so I can speak again after, because I'm sure our public comment is what different things to say about. Yeah, I don't want to speak in opposition to the project, at least to the extent that it is doing open ended closure of trail and arrested. So I'm very anxious to see Parker Creek repaired or back in service. So what events along the beach, um, with that, the juice. Very disappointing, but I do, um, feel strongly about the perspectives. I'm free here. I think the first point is the most important one as far as ability of this project and progress proposed. So I page seven of the staff report. Bottom, it mentions, uh, section seventeen point twenty point B. But it got to mention for this inadvertent that, um, that, that only allows for fences on top of the bluff, not at the bottom. So this pertains to both wooden fence and the metal things. Had to read top here if anybody wants to see it. Thirteen point twenty point oh eight oh B. This is a non-view obscurate type along off top. Basically necessary to deter trespassing or to discourage indiscriminate transfers upon the well face. It's very, it's very important that we, you know, be accurate about these things. That's a, that's a big point here. Also, the code in, uh, that previous one talks about the natural environments of the Great Trail. Seventeen point sixty point oh eight oh is the open space zone. That allows for fences, but maybe around the burial ground. Studies on, uh, down. And that, that the burial ground can't be close to the Axalingren Trail. Or they wouldn't have put the trail in. Fence, it's very limited what fences you, or you can put fences. Study area. General plan and the zoning ordinances, like the staff report says, protect views from vistas. And that's what the old Memorial Light House site gives. Not, well, it's all apart, but that's a private vista, private property, but street in my public property, and use it and enjoy the beauty from up there. And they put a big metal fence right there, big signs on it. It is not, it's not, uh, a good idea. It's not aesthetically acceptable. And I understand that you can see through it and you can see through the beach fencing also. Especially on, on page thirty with the slats further apart. It gets much more suitable. It's going to be fencing. But, uh, and also the, the metal post and everything, it just sounds more like a permanent fence. I mean, wooden fence, so, you know, that's a temporary. Just set the temporary, you know, the Van Gogh Trail closure was technically temporary also, but it's going on four years and so. It would take a lot of comfort in this idea that, you know, it's just going to be temporary. Like Richard said, when you're pounding metal posts, you've got to pound them down into the ground sufficiently. You're going to have a five foot tall fence. And what, what if you hit some coastal resource during that process? Sounds like a good idea. And if there's going to be signs on, on the fences, uh, at the top there, they should be no bigger than eighteen by twenty-two. It almost sounds like they want the big metal post so they can put up a big sign taking credit for having fun in this project. And oh, and here's our website. You can go here. That's, that's not the, that's not the idea. And if, if the bottom of Parker Creek can be temporarily repaired easily, why can't the bottom of Axalingren be repaired easily also? Point is, it, it could be one day's work. A bit of show and work. Park out some more steps, maybe put in a couple of, uh, grid with portions or we call it the cable steps. Probably can be right back in service and just be safe as any trail around here. There just hasn't been any good justification why the trail has to be closed. There's a lot of visitors to treat that. It will not be able to go to that beach. If Axalingren Trail was closed for like an year or so, like it will be. They won't be able to find their way to Parker Creek. Or, um, like Green Street Trail. They go there, they'll say, well, like somebody's yard, I can't put down here. And, you know, that'd just be a shame for no reason, no good reason. That's, that's very disturbing. So I think as, as it's written in totality, it's just very vulnerable to appeal to the city council. I don't want to appeal it, but I have to. But, you know, we'll have to see when it takes out here, I put some language there. You guys might want to use it as a starting point. You, uh, if you want, let's, this is on it. You guys have the authority. So your management team, they have no authority in the city. I understand coastal commission staff members are part of the team. It's the coastal commission has authority, just like you have the authority. Staff members have the they can rec, they recommend to the commission, just like our staff recommends to you, but you guys have the authority here. And, uh, another thing that's troubling about this is that here the city is position to start dumping all this money into the, into the project. And we're trying to give the property away. And recipients are saying, well, why don't you put a railing here? And, uh, do this and do that. And then we'll take it for free later after we fix it all up. You know, is that right? No, that doesn't sound right to me. We need to get the transfer of the property done. Sometime, I know, will accept this property. And I understand there's litigation pending that, uh, might be connected in some way to that issue, but I don't think, if the, if the city finished the transfer entirely, definitely simplify litigation. Certainly, because the city started the case by suing TAS. Because every time the city would try to move the transfer forward, they would block it and interfere and say, no, we won't agree to that. Finally, after what, it's been sixteen years. They threw up its hand and said, well, we got to let her have a judge then tell us who's supposed to do what you're disagreeing. How do we, you know, how do we end this salement? So transfer was completed. I think that would simplify and maybe even completely eliminate that.
And Bryce, if you could work on wrapping it up.
Yeah, one more point. The final point is that on management team, meetings are illegal. That's what we're in law. It's business has to be done in public. Where people can see it, very rudimentary sessions. I don't know how this got started, but this is really messed up situation with these secret meetings that are allocating, you know, what we're going to spend this night, we're going to do that. This is really, uh, unacceptable. Just, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll spare your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Jerry, I see you're still with us on screen there.
Thank you. As a person who grew up in Trinidad and of the Yoroc Descendants C. I'm, I'm disappointed in the comment by Mr. Kenny, and I really, really do respect him as a person who's, who's lived in Trinidad for a, a long time. Um, this is a traditional, traditional village. And, um, I do know that there is some room for improvement in relationship. And I think it was, um, Mr. Johnson who said earlier, he was happy to see some movement happening. And I think that we need to take that positive step forward and see that movement is happening regarding this trail and relationship fully with, um, this committee working with the coastal commission and the city and trying to move forward. I hear you. I'm a resident of Trinidad. We love the beaches. That's why we live here. We love to be able to have access to these trails. But we also have a responsibility. And you took that responsibility as planners to protect all areas within the city limits. And those areas do come with, um, traditional sites. And, um, I do hope that you prove the plan that it was presented. Uh, it's a good plan that'll move forward with small steps at a time, opening Parker Creek as planned. Developing, uh, um, this trail was a long-term goal of getting it, um, stable. And I just, uh, I, I thank you for your time for listening to, um, my perspective as, um, a member of the Yoroc Tribe and, um, who also has a village, not this, this village, but you know, how we have the responsibility. Um, not as community members, as city leaders, but myself as a traditional person to figure out how we can move forward in a good way, balanced way, uh, for everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please.
It takes some nerve to be up here to comment, you guys. They retired from Federal National Park, I read the songs and then made this one to suggest the possibility, um, in the park during the maritime characters take out the bridges over Redwood Creek. Because the mountains might um, coastal erosion that's took out the base of that's been the trail. And other places that you can see are the bridges, really a star, very quiet, very deep high. And it's a big scale process. And the process is putting all the sea packs out there in the ocean and all of that stuff. And if you try to, or the garden, the dukes, you know, that kind of stuff, I think it's going to be too small. But like I was saying, the, the, the park, I think maybe the the bridges and the sunburn line is small. And, and that's the technical, I mean, whatever. And I think you could have a ladder, maybe a little more ladder or something. That's, you could wait, if you think in a stronger place.
Trevor, did you have any comments or can you speak at all to, um, you know, code sections of the plan?
Yeah, um, so just the, the seventeen sixty, it's actually sixteen, um, is that one. So that one says, except for a fence around the burial grounds, any structures without approval of the city. What do you know, descendants of Chira, I turn over and share that. And Shiva. So basically it's a reiteration of policy sixty-nine. The, the one the twenty point oh, yes, let's see. So it goes, uh, no structure can be placed on or extended beyond the base of the public block. And those smaller channels will be some into the block base. Except for following structures may be placed on the block base and alterations made there to subject to obtaining use. So stairways, ramps and other structures or devices designed and intended to provide public access from the top of the bluff to the beach. Fences of a non-obscurate type along the bluff top. And shoreline protection structures. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, Bryce has a point there. I don't think the intent, you know, I think this is, this fence is really more, it's not for public access, but it's about public access and safety on an access point. So it might be more of a structure related to public access, being temporary to block public access and safety. I mean, I really think that you know, that there should be a fence at the bottom there because if people come down Parker Creek and there's no fence or signage, they're going to try and scramble up that. And it's, it's not, maybe it's not a significant source of erosion, it's just additional erosion and damage. And then they get to a barrier top that they can't get by. And then, then they're going to go around bushwhack. So I think it's important to have
Okay, now you've confused him. I, I, I was under the impression that there would be a fence at the top of Parker Creek Trail.
The Axalingren.
Well.
Sorry. No, sorry. No, Axalingren, sorry. No, no fences at all on Parker Creek.
With that, then I will bring it back to the mission for additional discussion. I did just want to check in with everybody. See, is everybody good to push through to the minute? Break before we dive into this or?
Yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll, uh, address the issue of illegal meetings. Uh, you know, these team meetings have been going for years, uh, in one form or another. So what's the rationale for saying that, uh, we are not violating the public trust?
Well, that's above my pay grade.
Yeah, so
Yeah, so our city attorney, Russians, has indicated that when we do have the Charai Management Team meetings, if they are not talking about cultural resources, that they should be open. But that's what we have done. Uh, since he had brought that forward to us, we've only had one meeting that was open and then we've had these series of meetings that have been closed because of the fact that cultural resources, the trails and the beach, Jerry.
So the, so it's clear, the justification is that these team meetings have been addressing cultural Right, right. Resources as well as fixes and rest solutions for trail opening pressures. Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm very sensitive to that because I want to follow where, you know, I really believe in the sunshine law and the fact of having open meetings. So as a result, I will keep pressing that we don't have something on the agenda that's going to be focused on cultural resource that the meeting should be open. And unfortunately, uh, along with that, um, anytime that we have a meeting that's open like that, then we couldn't have, uh, you know, um, I think, yeah, so, so in other words, when I say fortunately, okay, so in other words, if the meeting is open, then for the Charai Management Team, we can actually have one or two council members present, but only if it is open. So we're not talking about cultural resources, which allows it to be closed. Then the meeting will be open and we can also have council members. Right now, we cannot have council members, we could say can only have staff.
And I assume then that that would be open to the public as well.
Right.
As well as
Just a clarifying question. Yeah, I, when, when there are cultural resources on the agenda, does this meeting or could it be structured in such a fashion similar to a council meeting where there's closed session and open session?
Technically, it can. It's just that, I, I don't want to suggest, yeah, that and then also
um, kind of the same point that I made at the beginning. Be perhaps parsing this instead of just wrapping this up into one big parcel. Right? Discussing these things individually might provide opportunity at least for input and some sunshine and some light to be on it.
Right.
Then of course can go to closed session to discuss because I, I also understand that a lot of these things are intertwined and and are seen to interconnect and, and nothing, it's very hard to have it in isolation, but it might be a way to increase transparency.
Right.
Uh, moving forward to as a suggestion for this.
Exactly. Whenever we can, ideally we'll have meetings, you know, that can be totally open. Because I hate to have like, you know, council members show up and then all of a sudden, you know, they, they have to leave after fifteen minutes or whatever because the rest of it is closed. So ideally, we can have meetings that are open. Council members and have yeah, play in also.
And then just, just, there's just another clarify question is, since you mentioned staffs there, I heard you say the grant staff is there. Does the city have active grants for the study area? I'm just curious about their inclusion.
Yeah, their inclusion is because we're identifying potential grant opportunities. And uh, you know, and, and then, I mean, also because we're talking about trails too. And uh, we uh, like to get some funding for grant, you know, from grants for trails if possible as needed. And the other part of it is erosion and the bluff because uh, we do have, we had a meeting today and we're going to have a an open meeting in June fourteenth and fifteenth, which is open to the public on the Coastal Resilience uh, Action Plan. And uh, that's where we'll be talking about sea level rise and coastal erosion and everything. And, and that's based upon a grant that's about a half a million to study all of this. But then we're going to need grant funding to help address sea level rise and coastal erosion. So, so those are all interrelated and that's why, you know, having grants, uh, people there present. And then of course our city planner and our city engineer.
Okay, I'm just chairman, like I just have a minute.
Since, uh, yeah, a minute.
The team meetings.
And, and we'll just, you can have your minute, but the, the legality of the meeting is, I think, well past the purview of the planning commission. So with that said, you can certainly have your minute.
And I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that uh, they are now open to the public, is in form to the charity parts to be not the minimum of the public.
It, it, we're talking about cultural resources, never kind of cultural resources.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk, talk about that. But I'm surprised that you guys forgot about the policy that the city worked on so hard. You're happy, go or so, which I, I put a lot of input in work. We can balance the need for protecting cultural resources with also respecting the media laws and what we came up with was the rule that is, see, the whole place with the cultural resource, whole study area. So that can't be the, the touchstone. That Joe has to be something like, okay, it's the location of the bricks. Obviously, that is something that needs to be kept confidential. Maybe what a dance college or something like that. So what we, we came up with was that in government to government meetings between the city and tribes, which the management team is one tribe and state agencies, which are governments. You get specifics about cultural resources have to be identified. They're done in writing only. And the members of the committee can see those papers. They can't read them out loud, so they become public. And those papers sent from the public record that nobody even can say, hey, I talked to those, those papers. Those are exempt by county authority. So that's the balance we strip. And the management team meeting is a standing advisory under the Brown Act wanting to be open to the public. And it's also government to government meetings. So it's the perfect opportunity to put the city's new policy into effect. I mean, a lot of us are saying why that's not happening.
Thank you. Um, so how would we like to proceed? Do we want to carve this up into little pieces of that? Seem like a good plan?
That's what I think we should do.
Okay, I would like that too. Um, I did have a question, Trevor. Uh, I didn't see an example of the deer fencing in the packet unless I missed it. Uh, the, the suggestion for you know, different type of fencing, the sand or snow fencing there. I understand obviously it's not as robust, but it balances, I think potentially, I'm, I'm intrigued by the suggestion.
I, you know, I I think the deer fencing was proposed, uh, again, because you can see through it. So it was felt that that had less visual impact. Um, but I think if you feel that um, you know, the, the sand fencing would be better aesthetically. I don't see an issue with that. I mean, four feet, you know, I think it'd still be you know, uh, like, one of the things we talked about is like split rail fences, but then to install something like that in a round. So I think the driving mistakes in the ground is the least amount of soil disturbance. Unless you're just going to set something on the ground, that can be easily. So, um, so I think the metal posts and I, the, the snow fencing could be installed with the metal posts. Um, you can have four feet high, I suppose, some of them scramble and grow a little easier. Um.
How bad is that? And as far as the location at the top of the trail, um, I just want to clarify because it's, it's a big area, you know, there's a spot where the lighthouse was, there's kind of more, are we talking kind of where the plateau, the opening in essence where the trail truly begins, the narrow section there, is that?
It could be a narrow section. I, it's pretty close. I understand where the barriers are now. It's been a while since I walked by those. Um, but yeah, so the idea would be um, to extend it i- into the vegetation on either side. So we want an area that's fairly narrow.
Been a while since I've been down that trail as well, but isn't there sort of a landing, you know, several steps below uh, the top of the trail? It's about half a meter, it's half inch.
Bench, yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of benches as you had.
Again, like I said, we did talk about a potential for blocking it there as a, as a vista point, but I think um, that, that bench has been an issue because people stop there and they go off trail there. And so we didn't want to encourage more off-trail in that looking.
Uh, so I guess in the interest of kind of parsing this out, I think uh, there's the Axalengren Memorial Trail, there's the fencing down at the base of the bluff. To me, that's kind of combined with the, the, the jute matting that go there too. And then there's Parker Creek is kind of three things. Does anybody have a desire to divide it up further than that? Or?
That's fine.
Well, unless we have an objection, as we, I think we've heard a little bit about the fencing and the title fencing. Right now, it's metal, western, glass, metal fencing. And I'm not sure that we could meet the design materials and colors used in construction shall be selected for compatibility. Sure is, but most of the stuff up there on the bluff, most of the time is not necessary.
Anyway, to be clear, you're suggesting the deer fencing doesn't meet the criteria?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just.
Yes. Thank you for the call.
No, I just want to be on the same page. Um,
I think I, I mean, pressing it that way, lumping the, the jute in with the fence is a little bit concerning to me because the jute is not going to be removed. It's not a temporary installation. And for that matter, neither is solid, but various, you know, logs and stones that would be huge problem for the jute as well. Think that on Liberty Weekend, something's going to get done there, remove all of the rocks and stones.
To clarify on that point.
Uh, but the, the winter waves will.
The, the rocks that are going to be used, there's no material being brought down.
Just to clarify, because I had that same question. Um,
And it has to be taken from above the height.
In business, that narrow gravel.
Well, no, so that is, so last time here at a site visit, we could see the high tide line from the day, the night before, which was like a seven two. Um, and that, and the mean high tide, I think is five six. Um, and the seven two didn't get up to the rocks that we're talking about where we put in fence. An eight foot, you know, might so that's, so the, the rocky area just below the slope where transitions to sand, that's not
And before we dive in, one other question, the size of the sign, how was that decided upon? Because that
The twenty-four by thirty sign, I believe, is a condition of their grant. The other signs are, you know, probably eight and a half by eleven.
Well, let's make the signage of fourth section we talked about.
Are you comfortable with the, with the matting being, or would you like to see that?
No, I mean, I have overall concerns, like if, if indeed all of that debris is going to be washed away next winter. Sure, it seems fully necessary to face it. All right, so, anyway, um, we can talk about that when we get to it. Okay, we can lump them in together.
Um, so then I guess just in the unit of clarity, let's do A, Parker Creek Trail area, right, B, the Axalengren Memorial Trail. And then C, the beach bluff fencing and jute matting. And then D, the signage, or we can come to that when we get to Axalengren.
Well, there's signage associated with, with the beds on the beach and the Axalengren. Sure, so.
All right, so Parker Creek Trail. Uh, yeah, so this, I guess you maybe better explain like this potential emergency CDP issue is.
It's a, it's a little vague in the city's ordinances. Um, it is, you know, something that's allowed under the Coastal Act. And um, so the, the official that is, you know, tasked with administering a CDP is, which would be me, is authorized to issue a, a CDP to mitigate, um.
I guess I'm, I'm asking about how do I get it open by, well, that it's like an emergency.
Without losing, well, I think there's two, two possible ways. Um, you know, the city could proceed with, with the work at its own risk during the appeal period and it gets killed and cross that bridge if you come to it. Um, or you know, and, and maybe we'll talk about it at our meeting tomorrow. Again, I, you know, this was a suggestion from Coastal Commission staff. And, you know, I went back and forth with them a little bit trying to figure this out. Because it is a little convoluted. I, I don't, it's not a hundred percent clear to me. Um, but I could issue an emergency permit to mitigate damage minimum necessary to mitigate whatever disaster that means. So you know, like I said, I think we talked about, um, that it would include the, the jute, matting and beach materials, the fencing on Axalengren, you know, like here at Parker Creek, but not the fencing on the beach. To me, it seems almost easier for the city to just proceed at its own risk during, if, if it's
And then if it's not approved tonight, I don't know how that further complicates, um, you know, emergency permit.
Then it comes down to some scheduling issues and, and, and it was my understanding that the reason that we closed the trail last time was because we believed at, and, and agreed that it would be open again at Memorial Day.
Yeah.
So it's, it's still the plan?
That is still the plan. And it sounds like, you know, Eli said that both Samara and RCA could get started with them in a matter of days. So you know, once we have planning commission approval, again, I think yeah, there's the appeal period, but I, you know, it's a risk.
And, and that was your objection, not, not objection, but your point earlier that the appeal period goes beyond the Memorial Day weekend. Okay. Um, would you like to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I mean, is there any more discussion on the on Parker Creek?
I mean, yeah, I think we should, I'm not making a motion about it.
Well, I'll, I'll make an emotion, make a motion and
Yes, yes.
Motion A, uh, I move that we um, accept the findings of this staff report as conditioned to move forward as quickly as possible for the reopening. Uh, that we move forward with the repairs necessary to reopen Parker Creek Trail uh, by the Memorial Day weekend.
Can we assign a date to that?
Sorry.
Can we assign a date? Like first Friday before proceeding?
Or yeah, Friday. Whatever that date is, I don't know what it is.
I second that.
Right, uh, all those in favor? I I. Okay, motion carries to A about the Parker Creek Trail. All right, B is Axle Linger Memorial Trail.
Um, I think that if we're, I mean, this is slightly contingent upon letter C, but it seems to me though that if there's a fence, a snow fence along the beach telling people not to enter all along beach for a hundred feet at least each way, that there and not having a second fence at the bottom of the trail, at the top of the scarf where it's a road is a little redundant. And so I would, I would be in favor of fence at the top and not at the bottom of the trail pending we're going to put the snow fence on the beach. And also, I mean, I think of wooden fence or the snow fence in lieu of the green vinyl fence or vinyl coated plat- vinyl coated metal that actually more technically pleasing. And will be effective enough to. I I'm also, I would also like to add a condition that that I guess the management team can come up with a temporary solution to reopen the trail. I want to say sooner than the November ninth date. But at least by November ninth date, trail slopes, or the when the temporary closure slated at the end of the trail slated to reopen.
Something you can't do. Picking the cable.
Yeah, so I mean, log stairs, we've heard a few options tonight.
And that is very intriguing.
Handwork, hand tool work to, you know, carve out some steps, put in a temporary ladder, um, put in some quick cables, cable ladder steps. There's some temporary options that could reopen the trail.
Do you have a question? Or may I comment? So the fence at the top, you're saying have a length of that? Are fencing that has holes in it that preserve the use?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm suggesting. It would be a wooden fence that's four feet tall rather than a wire fence that's six feet tall. And
yeah, the the wire fence was going to be five feet.
Okay, so give me five feet.
Yeah. And 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 if we did a wood fence, it probably should be also five feet. Uh, I mean, the intent was that that they didn't want to have anyone utilizing that trail, would rather go in Parker Creek. But then the question I would have, and Trevor might help out with with the uh, the vista and the view, uh, because we do have some households and the bed and breakfast above. And I don't know if they would complain that the view is obstructed and and if they have a right to that view.
I mean, I I think it's, uh, you know, aesthetics is subjective. Um, and, you know, I see advantages and disadvantages of both. I mean, being able to see through the fence might be preferable to some people. Having a natural looking fence, even if you can't see through it, might be preferable. I mean, it's, uh, you know, the language in the findings is structures, including fences over three feet high. I think it allows significantly block views. Roads, trails from inside residences located uphill. You know, would that sort of four foot fence be a significant view blockage? Um, you know, probably maybe not four feet, you're getting up at five feet maybe.
Like, I was just thinking on that note too, with the well, I'm going to turn the curvature of the drop off that naturally occurs there. I think it'd be very easily situated to where even in theory, a solid fence would be only obscuring the view of vegetation behind it.
Slightly, yeah.
While I appreciate views are subjective, I would suggest that most people are doing not vegetation right there. So it could be situated, you know, a wooden one.
If they were too low, I mean, if they were, you don't want it too low on the slope where someone could just get over it. Yeah, I mean, certainly the the coyote brush that's growing around there is.
Um, but I'd like to bring that up because the last thing we need is we're trying to make these improvements to reopen Parker Creek and reopen Old Palm Beach. Then we want to have on top of that, uh, playing about their being obstructed. Creates another layer of issues, which staff already has enough issues that we're dealing with right now. So certainly don't need more, so that that's why we bring that up.
Well, I would, I would almost submit that a six foot, I'm sorry, you were going to do a six foot fence with the green.
Five foot.
So I would submit that a five foot fence with the kind of spacing for openings versus a four foot wooden slat fence where the slats are probably six inches apart isn't that much difference.
They're they're closer together if if we use the same fence.
So if you're looking at the photos that you gave us, they're pretty, some of them are pretty far apart. My point being is that, as you said, it's kind of a uh, compromise, but I I, in my mind, it more easily adapts to the environment of that area. Um, and not that I am suggesting this, but if someone has a problem with the view, this is appealable to the city council of.
Yeah, the another condition of approval, um, for this one. I guess we're clarifying things, since we're going to talk about signage later. It relates to signage, so with the, for me, with the approval for what we're talking about for the actual Linger. Signs are not a part of that, to be clear, this section B, is that, are we all on the same page there? I just want to be clear, so that you're trying to construct what these look like as to the facts.
I appreciate that.
Right, signage, signage later, because I have a thought on that, okay. That sounds like the suggestion is, uh, a question on the bottom of the fencing that's currently planned, we're not there yet. Um, are there returns planned on that? Since obviously you're even parallel to the bluff, are there returns planned on that to? Or could there be?
Yeah, it would probably kind of curve in towards the bluff, um, or you know, there, there's a rocky point just to the west of Axle Linger, so we were kind of thinking of bringing it in there. Um, and and then sort of a big log at the other end at the three hundred and fifty feet. Um, you know, how how much fencing did you buy, do I, four hundred feet?
Three, three hundred years old, yeah.
Three hundred, okay. Um, so I mean, we, but we were kind of looking at, you know, maybe a little bit less and not extending it past the Axle Linger. So I understand your point that if there's a fence already crossing at the base of Axle Linger, then maybe the fence at the bottom is necessarily, but if the fence doesn't go all the way past the Axle Linger trail and beach, then there's more of a need for the fence.
But also the intent of that fencing is to preclude people from scrambling up onto the bluff. Just having a a open line parallel with no ends on it is pretty pointless, because I can just walk around the side of it if it doesn't return back in and actually protect what we're trying to protect here with this, right?
So probably makes sense to do it from a point to a point.
In an art kind of fashion.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah, with me from a point to a point. Uh, well, our Steve Allen was thinking around fifteen feet. We just wanted to make sure that it did extend.
What do you mean by that fifteen?
You're talking about the one that would have gone at the bottom of Axle Linger?
No, sorry, we were kind of trying to talk about the other one. Self or on the beach itself, you have to understand how it ties into that, because again, things are independent, but they're not.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure how that would. In theory, it makes sense that, yeah, go beyond Axle Linger, but something we can navigate, right?
There's definitely, I think if we went beyond Axle Linger, then I'd have to go all the way to that rocky point. There's a little anything down and kind of anchored and. And and I think that's, yeah, we probably anchor it to the lows.
Because you talked about a hundred foot west of Axle Linger, right?
Yeah, I wish it about that rock, so yeah, so that's the max, that's the max, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they were suggesting, uh, meaning from the Turin Coastal Society. Uh, but, uh, you know, we, we were going to try and figure out what was practical, you know? Uh, because it was just like thrown out there, it would be from that point all the way down to that other on the east side, which was like, uh,
It's a big, it's a big log, yeah.
A large plot, yeah.
Which seemed like a really long stretch. Yes, because when we talk about three hundred feet or even four hundred feet, I think it would be less than that full stretch.
Maybe even like where this arrow is, that might be another. So I mean, one of the things is we want to leave a little bit of flexibility to make some decisions.
Is it, is it possible, regardless of fence material, that the top of the fence is no higher than ground level about landing where the where the my house used to sit? It could be theoretically like just have one chain that says trail close fifteen feet ahead. And then down below, indeed have whatever the material, like a completely, you know, impermeable fence that that's trespassing. I think there's some fairly thick that gets down there, is that true? You'd have to really, you'd have to really want to get past it to get past it.
Yeah, you know, I don't know exactly the slopes. I mean, certainly if you're standing there, you can probably see pretty long way down, but is it really going?
I think, I guess my point is that I think it's possible to very effectively close the trail without necessarily steering rules.
It could also be a good way to mitigate that option to stay by our side.
To put it further down.
On the fence, yeah.
Ritzes get a little, Grantors get a little snickety about that.
Yeah, well, look at the big.
Yeah, right.
So as I'm hearing the things we've kind of talked about, uh, Tristan, you suggested that top, but not the bottom for the fencing. And this is specific to the actual Linger Memorial Trail. And then a condition of approval, uh, for an alternate route by, at the very latest, at November, November ninth.
Yeah, I would say a temporary interim solution. A temporary, uh, solution to reopen the trail. Um, I would ask the management team I that we could see it by our July meeting, but no later than I guess it would be the October meeting when we will after readdress the closure.
Now, I think, I mean, we can't, I wouldn't recommend conditioning anything on requiring the management team to do anything. Um, I mean, one way to do it would be a recommendation.
Going to be required city to do something instead?
Well, I mean, you can require that we, you know, discuss it with the management team, I don't think.
Could I try a couple of words?
Yeah.
Actually, on page eighteen of the staff report, second paragraph, S A S has received a grant from the Seventh Generation Fund, et cetera, to study redesign and restoration options for the Axle Linger Memorial Trail. I would just suggest then that we say as part of that study to examine temporary measures necessary to reopen the trail by November. See if the grant will allow that to happen, because when you say restoration options, that's an option.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could.
And SHN is doing the work.
Do you see?
I'm not, I'm sorry. But that was a bad one.
Wait, I heard about the word restoration. That's an open way to open it, but it's not a way to restore it, restore access. Well, that's, yeah, but I mean, I know the way they were using for restoration was to live food.
Well, to me, restore means you restore it back to its original conditions.
How about direct staff to explore options for temporary repair at management team, at upcoming management team meetings and report back recommendations? I don't think we can guarantee much more than
to be as a condition request that they develop a plan to restore temporary access?
Sure, recommend, yeah, recommend request, yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, I have the 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 management plan up in front of me, and I mean, there's a lot of things that have been agreed to here a lot of years ago, but one of them is that the trail requires continuous monitoring and possibly seasonal maintenance by the property owner, particularly after season, you know? You know, a lot of, I'm sure, I'm I'm sure this isn't representative of the other group, is there coming up these options, right? There's a lot of things, but I mean, this is just routine maintenance. Potentially of the existing trail wall, we pursue these other options to try and restore that back to usable.
And I mean, it certainly should look percolate. It's on the down road. It should, you know, I can't guarantee what actually might come up.
You're suggesting that staff takes that, takes that as a.
Yeah, you can direct staff to to bring this up at the management.
So in essence, just to recap, directing staff.
Encourage the management team to develop a temporary solution to a temporary solution in order to reopen ALMT. Exactly.
To direct staff to encourage the management team to explore and develop temporary solutions for you to open the Axle Linger Memorial Trail. As soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible.
Yeah, I like as soon as possible. Um, I also like request versus encourage.
Thank you.
Here's one thing, I understand request of nonbinding as well, but encouraging is a little bit.
So there, in order to remain that it may not be possible, really, could we use the terminology as soon as possible? Or it's just not possible, so keep waiting.
That, that would be.
If that's a potential out, I mean, yeah.
If I get to that, I think anything is possible.
I mean, I think.
I never.
You, as part of this decision, you can't commit the city to doing something that the hasn't already committed to doing, you know, I mean, I think other than having staff do actions, but like you can't say, I mean, the city will repair that just like. you can't say, okay, the city will repair that just like.
I mean, my concern is that's while about temporary closure. This, at the moment, set to expire in November, sounds, and I mentioned earlier, that there's, there's going to be a trail closure in place until next Memorial Day. If there's any way we could expedite that.
We could move to reopen it.
Well, that was not on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I mean, naturally, as it stands right now, my understanding and clarifying some points from the public with you, Trevor, is that it expires unless action is taken. And action has to be noticed and the whole process is to be gone through again. So in essence, November ninth. The trail closure is over. As it stands right now. Regardless of any work or planning done. But I think it's in the best interest of everybody to come up with a temporary safer solution to deal with some liability concerns, the access concern, the cable, you know, log ladder is not great anymore, hasn't been for a long time, but.
I mean, I, I'm fine with that condition as we did it.
I mean, what's going to happen is come November or October, when the, this is, the closure is going to expire. If there's not a temporary solution, it's going to come before us asking us to extend it and revisit that. I'd say how that will go, but. If we want to make it open sooner, it sounds like we need to, would need to get it on the agenda. Expediting. I mean, I guess we have the ability to just make it open if we want to.
Sure, probably had to discuss which.
Well, okay, except let, let's be, if we do that, we open ourselves for an appeal immediately. So I, I, I personally, I think we're in the weeds. I think we need to step back a little bit. I think we've given sufficient direction from uh, to staff to come up with some solutions. I agree with you. We'll look at this again in November. In the meantime, as part of the monthly readout that we get from staff, oh, that the planning commission and city council. Uh, we can discuss where they're at with their options. I think that's the best that we can do under the circumstances.
And, and if we get a temp, if we get, you know, some consensus on a temporary solution, we'll certainly bring that back to you to get them.
So is there a motion?
I think we still haven't.
Maybe you figured out the fences.
Yeah.
At the top and the bottom, right?
Yeah, and maybe. So the bottom fence. You were saying is contingent on, so do you want to say no bottom fence if the beach fence extends past Axle Linger Trail, or do you just want to say no bottom fence? One, and then what do you want the fences to?
Well, okay, I'll say, I think it makes sense to make the fencing consistent throughout the whole project. So I would, my feeling is make the fence all the same, which was what we call the snow fence or the sand fence. I am not as hard over as having that fence at the bottom of the trail versus the, the fence that is on the beach. I think if we can wrap it like we've been talking about, um, that is acceptable to me. Let's face it. No matter what we do, uh, someone will figure out a way to try to get to do something various. So I think, um, wrapping it, single design or single type of fence for all the locations is what I would recommend.
So if I could comment, um, so as a result of our meetings, we were forced. The coastal commission is very concerned about wildlife. And we got the Department of Fish and Wildlife, those are our next time where we walked around there and looked at it, but the, but Coast Commission had a concern about that fence trapping wildlife.
Which fence?
The fence on the beach.
On the beach, okay.
So, so if you wrap it around, I think it would be even more trapping wildlife, possibly.
No, I think he just means wrap it around to either within some willows or to the, the edge of the bluff so that people can't just walk around it. They have to scramble around it and then wildlife is submitted. We're not going to try and anchor.
So, so the other option was just, you know, we, we addressed the snow fencing on the beach as the way that one of these contractors would address it, you know, along a particular stretch. And that, uh, when you look from the beach at the Axle Linger Memorial Trail and the part that's eroded, which is what may be about twenty feet high or or less fifteen feet high. So it would be right at the top of that, let's say fifteen feet. And, and we could do that wooden fence, just like want to have it. Have it there so that people wouldn't try to navigate through the rocks and everything, all of a sudden get to a fence that they're going to have a hard time if they try to get around it. Uh, I, I, I think it would, or you could have like the option of, because I'd like to leave it up to the contractor when they're doing it to see what really works. If you hear, first of all, we're not professionals in that respect. Then secondly, once you're doing a project, even if you do a project around your house, a lot of times you end up tweaking things just because your original thought didn't quite work. So I think flexibility might help. But, but you know, direction of what you're suggesting, but I think either one would work, you know, and, and if this wraparound doesn't work, I think the other one would, would be a real good fix. Our city engineer had suggested the location of it, uh, being where it, the, all the erosion is at the base. So it'd be right at the top of where.
There's still, at this moment, there's still remnants of the old wire log steps down there.
Yeah, parts of it, but it's, you can use part of.
It's pretty well materialized, right? What if removing that, I mean, remove a queue that is an access point? I mean, like, I'm of the opinion that if this trail is going to be closed, let's close the trail. Let's remove, you know, any queue that there's a trail, let's make all the structures that we've got as impenetrable as possible. Like, if we're going to close it, let's use it.
It, it is, I mean, once down there, uh, that little ladder, it, it's missing at least a couple of those. So I mean, it really is not in proper condition as it is. So I'd say that's just a totally.
But it's still a queue, there is a.
Yeah, exactly.
Or you could get rid of that.
I would just say I, I appreciate that, but I'm hesitant to remove any infrastructure until we know what we're going to do. I'd hate to remove something, go, oh, you know what? Gosh, we could have used that for this or that.
I don't mean, you know, destroy or dispose of it, but like coiling it up and putting it in the weeds.
Yeah, we, we, we would just buy another one, i- i- if that's the route we want to take. Because it's got like wire on the end and then the wooden, um. So it's almost like a ladder that's flexible. It just sort of like lays there. But it's missing a couple pieces. So, you know, it, it's really broken. So as a result, it's better to, uh, you know, if, once we want to reopen it, if we want to reopen it and use that same concept just to buy a new one to lay on there and not to utilize existing. Because I think it comes already intact. It's not like we built it together. It, it already comes where you would drape it over and already has the, the, uh, wire or metal or whatever on the outside. The wooden bars in the, as steps.
I, I suggest just, I'm guilty myself to Richard's point, where we're getting a lot of the details. I think right now we're just talking about placement of fencing at the top of the bottom of the trail. It's kind of what we agendaize and discuss and not so much the detail knitting really of how the work was to be done.
My, my suggestion was just that removal of that queue almost serves in lieu of the fence, right? Like removing a queue is akin to placing an obstacle. Removing access is akin to placing an obstacle. That was my suggestion.
I think you could, you know, not require it, but if you suggested it or authorized it as part of the project, that if you know, on the ground, the contractor, because I don't know what it would take to remove it. Ocean or something. Servants of cultural resources, but it, we can leave the option open.
Just make reopening it harder.
I would suggest maybe, um, in terms of the fencing, maybe if, say, if the fencing. If the fencing along the beach doesn't extend past the Axle Linger Memorial Trail, then authorize the fence at the bottom. If it does extend beyond west of the Axle Linger Memorial Trail, then no fence at the bottom.
Yeah. Take a stab at a motion. Uh, yeah, I know that fence at the top of Axle Linger Memorial Trail being made of the same snow fence as other fences in the project. And that if there, if this fence along the beach is to either, does not get put in place or does not extend to the bottom of the trail. And there'd be a fence at the bottom of the trail. Of the same material. And I recommend that staff request the management team to search and propose, um, a temporary opening plan for the Axle Linger Memorial Trail.
I just want to make sure she gets it all down. Is that consistent with your recommendation for a recommendation?
Yeah, uh, well, actually, I guess I wasn't listening to that closely. I was just referencing my previous float.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay. I'll second.
Yeah, all those in favor? I, I. Emotion carries.
Need a minute break.
Yeah, we'll take a quick two-minute bio break for everybody. Right back. Got a key on it. Little strength back. Yeah. It's awesome to get this. That's, okay, yeah.
There's definitely. Yeah, I mean. And it's, yeah. You keep all those strictly Robert's rules of order, which you need to do. Yeah. Yeah, yes. Yeah, I think, you know, some of the S T are in discussions and some of the Y P M, which could be a few others. But yeah, usually we couldn't. That's what you get when you procrastinate and you need to get the last minute. That can be your students.
Exactly. I feel like I just started from surviving. My wife and I will return. Oh, my wife and I just start full time in work. The other, first time my mom goes up there, it's a, yeah, I can't wait. I'm just, maybe show that most of the time, I'm like, it's a big case, I'm seeing that.
Prior to the surgery, were they all sent this long continuous, so some people successfully.
Yes, sir.
It's a win. I'll take it.
Yeah.
Like floating bodies in there, I don't know, tears pinched into the capsules, so that it's steps that will, yeah, well, yeah, wasn't able to take a month to prepare, I guess, and it just.
Are you going to set off? There's security.
Yeah, nothing was added. I guess it was my mistake.
This is just telling you anything. This is just telling you anything.
Do a good job. One, invasion. Second. I figure the city owes me.
I think like you're installing a car. Because the X is a calculated extent of. Yeah, zip code of residence.
I, every time I buy a car, we have to absolutely insist that they go and look at the.
Interesting, yeah.
Because they want to charge the. To tax. You know, or zip code for. Uh, but county, but county parties.
Talking up to your donation to the city road.
No, uh, no. I've donated enough.
Trails.
Trails.
All right, thank you, everyone, for being. Back in session now, continuing on with. Two B, which is the beach fencing.
Um.
Excuse me, C, two C, which is the beach fencing.
Wait. I thought that was three.
Yes, C was beach fence, well, it's, I look at beach, well, whatever.
I understand sign study was just the beach, or was just the Axolí Memorial Trail, top and bottom. Yeah, fencing.
Yes.
So now we're moving on to the fencing.
Yes, but wouldn't that be number three?
Yes. Wait, what did we just agree to? Okay.
I can't wait to see the minutes on this one.
Yeah, good luck. So.
The. Jude matty and the fence, right?
Yeah.
And we.
Uh, my big issue here for hangup would be the cameras.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know exactly where the cameras were. They weren't proposed, but where they were thought about being placed with no cameras.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Other than that, the proposal is potentially up 200 feet west of the bottom of the Axolí Memorial, extending no more than 400 feet east. Is that a total of 500 or a total of 400?
Oh, no, that, a total, I, I think really that total is actually 350. I just rounded up to 400 just to. Be safe, because we weren't actually out with the tape and then, you know, moves around.
So potentially 100 roughly west and then 100 east towards Parker Creek.
Two. So 100 west of Axolí Memorial and, oh, I mean, up to 300 feet. East of Axolí Memorial. But likely it's really going to be like 200 to 300. But Eli, I think that's.
I, I can hear. I guess one. Are we very sure that this fence is being placed above the beach high tide line? Or we're not exposing city liability by putting it state property?
Yes, and we've been down there with coastal commission staff. We have, I mean, it's without a survey, it's difficult. Um, but yeah, it's pretty clear. We have, um. You know, pretty reliable white data for recent years that we can get elevation off of. Um, yeah. But yeah, it, it extends, like I said, it's like 5.8. It extends down pretty far. We saw the, we saw the high tide line from the 7.2 tide. Were down there and it was below the rocks.
Just to help me understand the rationale for it being away from the edge of the slope as opposed to right up against it?
Because we don't want people get it, one, we don't want people getting too close to the bluff. Um, some materials have sloughed off and come down. Um, one, and two, um, because it, it, there's some pretty good sized rocks up there and it's going to be harder to place the fence. We're talking about putting it right where the sand and the rocks meet.
I have a couple of questions. In the report, it says that there will be no stable significant in private long packs. I was curious, who determined that? Fishing, giving official wildlife posts? Eli mentioned that there may have been some concern about.
Well, that's, yeah, so, uh, that was one of the concerns that, um. Coastal commission brought up, so we invited. Someone from, from California Fish and Wildlife staff to come down and he, he didn't have any concern. Um, you know, it's, it's, you know, falls under an exemption. I mean, you could argue that there's an exception. Um, but no, I don't, I mean, I, I review seque.
And. Fence is mounted on when T post or something?
I believe it's panel.
Or something.
Yeah.
They're real there to get out of the ground.
I'm fine with, uh, as what, as we have modified it.
And just to clarify, sorry, the purpose of the fence is exclusively to prevent people from. Up in the area, there's no other.
And the, the Jude matty is, is, you know, one, it covers up some of the exposed areas. Um, but also the idea behind that was then it. You know, presents as more of a restoration project as opposed to, oh, here's just this fence randomly. And so, you know, the signage we'll talk about. I don't know if it's going to say restoration or, you know, erosion control in progress or, you know, something like that, that, that hopefully people won't.
I just had a request on the original condition number two that would apply to this, uh, page 14 or packet page 29, talking about the burial on Old Beach. Just to clean up the language, um, the last sentence that begins with all fencing material would be removed between Labor Day and no later than September 30th, 2023. Uh, and then responsibility city manager while fencing is in place and sentence. Really clarifies that for me. Here to make a motion.
Well, okay. I move approve the installation of. Each base fencing. Which is that. As conditions. As conditioned is what, yeah, yeah. And well, that is one of the, I'm sorry, yes, no cameras.
Second, second. All those in favor? I, I, hey, need to have this passage. Next signage. The only signs I saw specifically proposed in here, Trevor, the. For lack of a better term, acknowledgement signs for the grant, is that correct? But then I heard you mentioned something about potential restoration work progress signs, but I didn't see.
So, yeah, that's, that's the one we really, that's the only one we have some specifics on. Um, in terms of what it's proposed to be. Um, the other ones, I think there's more flexibility. We've got some ideas about wording and, and size. Um, but that hasn't been determined yet. So, you know, you can either approve it with some flexibility or if you want to put some.
Um, can we? I mean. I think signage down along the beach regarding. Why the area is closed. For restoration. vegetation. Those should be. Eight and a half by elevens. Fine on that for size. I guess the only sign that, that. Quite large is the one funding the project. That's like almost an advertisement right there. I guess that's the point, but. I mean. Could we put that sign just down on the beach? I don't know, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one who has an opinion on signs, but. Opened other ideas. And so that, the, the size grabbed my attention too. I actually called it the Tate measure. As I was reviewing my packet, um, perhaps conditioning it to the smallest size that meets the grant. Requirements, so that way if this is truly a grant requirement, we don't know, we, you said you thought that. But if it's a smaller, I'm very much in favor of that. But I also sensitive to the value of having the funding to look at these options. That, yeah.
So the only other sign that, um, that we have talked about, I'm hoping that we can combine it with the restoration sign is directions to, uh, the Parker Creek Trail from. Excuse me, from the Axolí Memorial Trail, so. I don't disagree with the eight and a half by 11, uh, size, but it might have to be just a little bit bigger if we want to combine those two messages. In one place, which I think from my perspective makes more sense than having another sign that says. Go this direction to get to, uh, the beach. So I guess what I'm saying is minimize the size of the sign, yet ensure that the messages are clear.
Yeah, that's. The, the other thing, um. I think would be valuable to include on the side, signs is like, it can be in small print, but like a reference to. These are approving said project. That way curious people could see why the heck things are, things are the way they are.
And I would also encourage whoever's drafting these signs, you know, because anytime you encounter a trespassing sign, you're running a cost benefit analysis, right? Clearly indicate that there is, you know. Your record will vanish if you. Go through these little cold areas. Resources.
Fair question, is it implied or understood that the approval is only during the closures? And so, for example, the, the, the gratitude sign to the seventh generation fund is only authorized during this closure.
Well, that's a good question. I guess if they, I don't know what their grant specification is. But they wanted it on this fencing, so I guess.
On the temporary fence.
On the temporary fencing, so if they need it longer, then they'll have to. Yeah.
Okay, so, uh. You know, I mean, if you want to limit it to. The extent of the restoration, so in other words, it could be up now, it could stay up until they finish their improvement. Because, you know, they're, they're having the first phase, meaning G H D doing a report. And then after that, you know, they're, they're going to be doing. So. If, if there's a big gap in between there, then we might want to say take the sign down. But then when you're doing the restoration, the actual work, then that's when, I'm sure that's when they really want to stop. Uh, showing, showing that they're doing a project that's funded by seven generations.
I think, I think what he was getting at is that the sign, the T A S are proposing it mounted on this fence. The fence is going to be there as long as the trails.
Oh, I see.
So if, if we reopen the trail, I'll take out the fence and they still need their sign.
Find another way. Okay, I, I see.
It's not explicitly stated here, but. Condition could be just that the sign is a fixed, temporary fencing. It doesn't actually say where the sign gets posted.
Yeah.
So, uh. So I'm just going to mention this because you guys were talking about the weeds before. So, right now, the direction you're giving us is really, really getting into the weeds. Uh, and, and, you know, you have, you have the right, but I would suggest that, uh. You know, we're talking instead of eight and a half by 11, or talk about everything on one side, or talk about including this also on that side. The number one, you say, you know, whatever sign you have, maybe possibly might be more than one, you know. Uh, not be larger than a particular size. So, you know, so if we do it seven by 11, or if we do it, you know, uh, 12 by 15, and you, you know what I mean? So it creates more flexibility, you know, so not larger than a particular size. And then the other thing is, uh, suggesting if we could include it on one side, but not precluding of having maybe two sites, one, I mean, a big arrow, D tour, Parker Creek Trail and, uh, and Walker Street Trail, or, you know, yeah. Uh, as, as one thing, and then the, uh, other one would be having. A sign that says, uh, that the, uh, trail is closed, uh. You know, whatever reason, you know, but so in other words, uh, then it could be two signs, you know. Just one, I'm just saying, give, to give a little bit of flexibility. Uh, so that it could be possibly two signs, but generally not larger than S. Because I agree, the other size of the sign is.
Yeah, if we didn't use the word minimize.
Right.
That's what we, that's the operative word. And that could be for both the amount of signage and the size.
That's better.
Maybe wording as, uh, the size and number minimized to G.
I mean, with the preference to co-locate information where possible. And a fixed to temporary fencing. I just say, since I don't know that necessarily needs to be in, in this, but since you're here, Eli, and this, everything keeps pointing to city manager, I'm sure you're going to defer to staff, you know, to do this, but. I'd strongly encourage an inventory of the number of signs, so that way as things get checked, we know whether or not one blew away, both replacement and just shoot, one of our signs is missing. Oh, yeah, yeah, we always check. But if we don't know how many, we start with how many, you know. Take a stab at this motion. Take a stab at this motion.
Hey, I was just throwing in note that when you said, uh. Having it on the fence, um, I, I did like, uh, Chris's idea of possibly having like rope or a chain. Simply with the sign up there, right where we currently have the barricades. And then possibly just right out with that, so we'd be able to lower, would actually be the whole fence. So that. If this, this signage could actually exist where that either chain or rope would be where the current, uh, barricades are. And then the other sign would be after it, maybe a few more feet or whatever, just to the point where it could actually drop. So, so that the signage doesn't necessarily have to be on the fence, but it could be on the rope or chain.
It's to the temporary barriers.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, I move that. The signage for the project, the. Size to size and number needed to make necessary information. And that it be affixed to the temporary barriers.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, most carried unanimously. Okay, anything outstanding from item two, A through D? Uh, given the lateness of the hour, I'm not sure quite how to do this, but I would suggest that we, uh. Defer agenda item three until our next scheduled meeting. Any objection to that from anybody present in the room or online? Seeing none.
Anybody has any pressing comments?
Uh, Sherry, I think it's raising your heat.
Oh.
Uh, it has nothing to do with your agenda and finishing up the night, um, appreciate everybody's. Long hours, um, I was just gonna ask a question, um. Regarding the. Sure Eye Management Team. And I believe that City of Trinidad is a member, and I know that, um, Eli comes. Um, and your staff come, but. Have you thought about maybe a council person coming to that meeting? And I don't know if that's, um, possible or not, but it doesn't really specifically say who. On the City of Trinidad should attend those meetings. Um, just like the York Tribe, it doesn't say it has to be the chairperson or whatever, it just says York Tribe. So I was wondering if, um, that's something to think about and consider, so that there seems to be a little bit more transparency. Um. With what's happening in that meeting, uh, so that was just a thought. Given that thought. Uh, when things come forward to the planning commission, you have to make sure we're not in conflict. Um, area or situation, so that, that's what I was thinking about when you were all talking about. The Sure Eye Management Team and, um, just figuring out how to, um. Uh. Be a little bit more transparent with, with you all and with the City of Trinidad coun- um, council members. Um, thank you again for your hard work.
Thanks, Eric.
I just wanted to note, Cherry, based upon your, uh, comment and question. So, uh, when we came up with the, uh, G to G plan, government to government, we also. Uh, were addressing standing committees and determined that the Sure Eye Management Team is a standing committee. And as a result, because it is a standing committee, uh, it needs to be open in order to have council members present. So, we have had one meeting where we have had it open. You could have council members. So we could have one or two council members, uh, but only if the meeting is open to the public. Lately, the meetings have been closed because we've been talking about cultural resources, but, uh. Ideally, when we're talking about the Sure Eye. Management, uh, uh, you know, the area, the, the twelve and a half acres, um, ideally. Uh, if we're talking about specific cultural resources, uh, then we'll have it closed and we cannot have council members. Just talking about the fact that it is a cultural resource in general or something like that, then that should be open and should be open to the public, and that allows us to have council members present.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, commissioner reports, any commissioners have anything to report?
I'm barely not able to make the next one, I'll be away, hopefully I can turn for a moment.
Great. Okay.
Thank you, thank you all. I, I'm cold in the winter, so.
All right, anything else? All right, staff report, Trevor. Is there more you need to say?
No. I think between this and, uh, I've been working on the ordinance amendments, getting those on the council agenda, housing related ones. This, it's been. Taking up a lot of my time, I, I worked on some other BTS permits today, so yeah, so just putting away on, uh. You know, trying to get these, the grant tasks. Done, that are.
Okay, future agenda items, any changes or suggestions to that?
I, I was gonna make a suggestion, but I'll table it, but I, uh, will just say briefly, um, I think that just having this list is really of an unadded value, just as it is. Um, perhaps there's a way in which, and I've got some suggestions, but I won't grant them tonight, don't worry about it, but. I think there's a, a way which maybe we can get off top dead center on some of these, it would really be. Useful to have a discussion about how to do that and think about. Priorities and, um. Specific issues and challenges to getting done, et cetera, so, uh, that's, I'll take it tonight.
There was previously some issue, have any workshops? So, I'm trying to address.
Again, that might be part of, uh, uh, a way to move forward on some of these things, so.
Do we need a specific agenda item to discuss that, or is that just for this, for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, no, I think that'll be a great discussion. Yeah. All right, with that, we are, Jared.